We'll do better when we do this again next time, now we know. It's our continuous improvement. Hopefully we're not going to be here. That's right. This is the last time I think we're going to be here for next meeting, so everyone is aware, which is on September 12th, I believe, will be in the back at Fowler, so we won't have to do this. This is for the summer, so we can have the recording equipment. So, first thing was to meet Colleen in order, our second item on the agenda is to consider minutes from the August 1st, 2019 meeting. So, we don't have that at this point.
Right. I think Colleen is still away.
So, we're going to table that until the next meeting. So, my chair report, I'm going to try to, I set myself five minutes and try to keep this brief, but I think that on the top of everyone's, I had some things I'd written along the time, I'll get into that, but on the top of everyone's mind, it's been just this past week that we had the Green Meadow preschool roof, that was a structural engineer came in and was not able to certify that roof for heavy winter snow load. And with that in mind, we very quickly had to consider other options. I was notified right away by Mary Jane, I notified the school committee right away, and they were able to meet with the teachers, and I'll let Mary Jane speak to some of that, but just to be aware, we have also begun looking at what we'll be able to do to help advocate. I'm meeting with, there's already been various conversations occurring around this. I'm going to be meeting with Ken, myself, from FinCom. We've reached out to folks at the BOS. I have emailed, not gotten to speak with Justine. We're looking into the, again, the options for being able to, at this moment in time, fund that envelope study. I also want to say that I know that, not a school committee, but a Green Meadow Future Committee Chair, we also have Courtney here, thank you for being here, that Josh met with Greg, and I think that we are moving forward. I don't know if anyone else would want to say anything about activities that have occurred within the last few days in relation to that or planned. We're going to have a FinCom meeting on August 26th, Monday, and be able to just mention this as well, so that that's on their minds, because for very obvious reasons, we want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and really making sure that this is getting addressed the way it needs to be. Anything anyone else wants to say at the moment about that?
No, I'm just hearing how Tuesday, the preschool session.
Thank you. That was another thing I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I didn't know, is this okay, just to, just wanted to get some sentiments on?
Yeah, so Natasha wants to know.
My own personal feeling, I just appreciate all the parents and staff, all the community that was able to come out, ask some tough questions, and just to know that my level of frustration is equally matched by that of the community. Clearly, you know, the more you read, it's just hard to understand, you know, where we still are. But recognizing that we have a lot of folks, new leaders in new roles, and I am optimistic that these hard conversations will happen in a way that maybe will be different than what has historically happened, and I appreciate the community's willingness, as it was expressed Tuesday, to allow us that time to really have those deep conversations under the circumstances, and also advocate along with us to see what we need to do to get going things forward. And I just appreciate the feedback that was shared, so, thank you.
And thank you to Mary Jane stepping in and immediately handling a first, more urgent situation with such elegance and engaging the community, because we really appreciate what you did. So, I will just mention a few other things that have been going on. So, we've been having meetings with Mary Jane, Mary Jane and I met, we established some operational protocols now that we have an superintendent, acting superintendent, interim superintendent in place for how we're going to operate, and communication flow, things of that nature. We did have a NESTEC training last Monday. I didn't get to make my notes as thorough, as I would like to, but given everything that's been going on.
I always say, I don't know, there hasn't been, like, other events happening in the past, you know, week or so.
So, we've begun the process. We have a timeline here, they gave us a packet, there's a timeline, they will be coming to the community to be able to share that. We have already begun with developing an invitational letter tonight as part of our subcommittee work. I think it would make sense to include under that the liaison to the NESTEC, so we can figure that out and move forward. We can put that to the next meeting if you want, but I wanted to suggest that to the group, we can talk about that when we get to that item. So, we will also be aiming to distribute that letter, approve that text by September 9th, Mary Brannely graciously.
I've received Lydia's feedback so far.
Great, great. So, we're providing feedback.
So, anybody else that wants to provide any.
What is your deadline for that? I don't think, I don't remember, was it, the 9th was to get out to them, but is it okay if we send it to you by the 9th? He sounded pretty flexible, or?
No, I'd love to get it in the next week, if I could, so that then I could put it all together and get it to them, and then they were going to tweak it and send it back to us for our final approval, or back to me.
By the end of next week.
That would be wonderful.
Right, thank you, Mary.
And then the next for us will be focus groups, and getting focus groups. So, we'll be identifying in our September 12th meeting, we'll identify the groups that will be the target groups for focus groups. So, yeah. So, that's kind of the, just a basic sense of the NESTEC. We do have Mary Brannely secured Kate Hogan and Jamie Eldredge to join us for our September 26th meeting, so we will do some prep for that meeting. In the next meeting, we'll also be working, we'll be having, we'll be looking at the master plan and considering the schools.
Yeah, September 12th. Brendan Chatwin and I met to work out language, and he's going to tweak it and then get it back to me, so that I think I can get it to you guys ahead of time.
Yeah, that would be great.
That's an okay thing to do?
You can, you can get it to us.
That's great.
We can have it.
I would like to. So, the meeting will be a lot more productive when he comes.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
That's part of the, yeah.
I'm a little gun shy now.
I know, I know.
It's considered meeting materials.
We also had our goal-setting workshop, I think that that was in between, since our last meeting, but we, we just, the one we just had.
The fifth was, we had one meeting on the fifth.
I think, yeah, the one we just had. Before this, we just had a workshop with Mary Jane and Jennifer around goal-setting, strategic planning, and operational protocols. FinCom meeting on August 26th will be in relation to the student enrollment and retention, looking at retention. And rightfully so, we need to keep that on our radar and really consider what we're doing this year ahead of the fact that next year, we will move up to 18% for charter school cap.
Yep, right.
So.
So, who's going to that meeting, the FinCom one?
So, as of right now, Mary Jane is going.
I'm going.
I'm going, and others could go, they just couldn't speak.
Okay.
Okay. And, yeah, we can, I can definitely send something around and make sure that we all are coordinated around that, that one, I hadn't gone to just this moment. But tomorrow, I can do that, how's that? And then we can make sure, we could have two of us that could speak, who want to be able to do that. And I think that's, oh, and the last thing was, the last thing I'll save for my member comment. Done. So, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report.
Well, we had our first leadership team of the year on the 13th and 14th, and the highlights of that were, you know, how the leadership team can work together to meet the district goals and talk about collaborative decision-making structures. We established some meeting times for the year for each of the areas, for example, the leadership and operations for the curriculum instructions. We established meeting times, and then there were some subcommittees as well, safety, well, that's another one.
We have a variety of district subcommittees.
Yeah. Okay, so we also talked about the evaluation, teacher evaluations and administrative evaluation, as well as creating a communication plan. So, we're working on creating a communication plan for the district. Our theme is, you know, we are Maynard, and we're going to try to do a lot to celebrate successes this year, meeting with the local newspaper, the Beacon Villager, so we're meeting with her quite frequently. We've asked the principals to create a weekly article, so we can submit them, so each principal will have a week to submit an article to celebrate that success. We had a new teacher orientation on August 20th and 21st, and we had about 20 new staff members there, they had a tour of the town, they were introduced to their mentors. So, next, we had each school, Maynard High School, the student schedules are being adjusted by the counselors, school building is looking beautiful. The sports all started today, everything started except football, which started on Friday. We talked about school safety plans at that meeting as well, so schools are now preparing school safety plans and recruiting people to be part of the safety team within their building, so they're looking at that. The high school has an SEL plan that they're working on, and it's just about ready for school implementation. They've communicated that to the staff as well. Fowler, today, they had a bike rodeo, I did miss it, I wanted to get out there, I do apologize, I wasn't able to. So, they were focusing on bike safety and bike maintenance, they were encouraging students to bike and walk to school, and then they're going to continue our walking Wednesdays in our bike club at Fowler. I was really excited to hear about the, they won the Safety Route to School Award, and that Green Meadow was also cited for their safety effort, so that was also something great. That building is ready, cleaned, and it's shining, the floors look like glass, they did a phenomenal job. Green Meadow, obviously, I'll talk a little bit about that, but teachers have been moving into the classroom all week, and the rooms are ready to move in as well. So, just a little about what happened on Thursday, as you all know, we called the structural engineer, and as Bethland said, the building is, had to be reconfigured to allow for the preschool rooms to be moved. So, we called the teachers who were in that wing in on Friday, the 16th, to develop a plan. When the plan was developed, we had all preschool teachers move into classrooms, all classrooms are standard classrooms, there were no more students in the library, there'll be no more little pods, every class now has a classroom, students will be having not a substandard classroom. So, the teachers were very happy, worked on this plan together, they were very helpful, supportive, I couldn't be more proud of the teachers. They were just glad that they had an opportunity to speak. After that, we had a meeting on Monday morning with all staff to, again, submit the plan to them as well, had a lot of good questions, you know, what can we do to help, how are we going to move forward? But again, we talked about how to get the town involved and really include everybody in the conversation, so they were also really, really great. On Tuesday evening, as Natasha said, we had the parents' meeting in, and I have to say, they were also very welcoming, they were concerned, but they were welcoming, and we really think that they're happy with the plan at this point. We are going to continue to move forward and try to make sure that the whole school is safe, so that's one of the plans we're looking at right now. I've visited all the individual schools, I've been watching, meeting new teachers, met a few students, I went to the student barbecue last night at the middle school, at the, yeah, the high school, we went to the barbecue, the freshman barbecue, that was fun. I did have my new superintendent welcoming, I had about seven or eight parents there, but it was, we had a good little roundtable discussion, it was very nice, so that was nice, I still have a lot of cookies left, so. So, I'm excited and enthusiastic to begin the school year, and all staff will be here on Monday, students start Tuesday. And that's what we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. I think that you could comment now, if someone, if someone had a question for you, it'd be all right if they, if we comment or ask about that.
Sure. And this is just, not only because you mentioned it, that I remembered, but a couple of people have said to me that they're finding the articles in the Beacon Villager frustrating, because they don't necessarily, they can't open them, because they have to have a subscription or something. And so, if there was a way to either copy the text somewhere that people could see it, or make it available, because you go to link and I can't even open it, so.
I didn't know that, so I will, I didn't even look at it.
It is, yeah, I think it's new too.
Right, because I have a subscription, you're right, the paper version, and I still couldn't get in.
I think if you have a paper, so, yeah, I think it's depending on your subscription, if you have a paper one, you can have access to the digital one?
Nope, because I have a paper one, couldn't access it either.
Wow. Do we have to literally get the newspaper?
Yeah.
I will talk to them, I'm not sure what I can do, but we can, we can.
Would it be possible, as a fix to that, maybe to, you said they were going to be coming out weekly, like the articles?
In a newsletter, I'll probably do the same thing in the newsletter.
I'm wondering if we can, like, on the, is it going to be school-specific, or is it going to be just overall, like, the district?
I've asked the principals to, once a month, I want each school to submit something to the Beacon Villager, so I, when I do my weekly newsletter, which I will be doing, I could probably take that article and put it in there as well.
I know that they have the news section on each school's page, I wonder if that, the text of that could be copied on the school's website in the news, and then that could be accessible or sent out, maybe in an email, to community, like, at least to parents, but then in addition to, like, an extra way, so that frustration level doesn't, because I do, I spent 20 minutes the other day trying to open up, one, it was about you, and I was like, oh, what'd they say about her? And, you know, once I got to it, but it, yeah, it's, you know, this, today in age, everything's aren't quick, you know, people kind of give up on it.
And I found, and I found that if you've been on their site, you've gotten, yeah, I guess, from an IP address, you only have a certain amount of being able to see something, and so now I can't see anything.
So, just maybe to complement it, also put it, the text of the article, maybe, like, from the article this week in the news on the website.
Sure, I think that's a great idea, so I will have that.
So, I do, just as the chair, do you feel like if you have any further suggestions, why don't you email them to Mary Jane about how to address this, so that we can continue moving on?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
That's a good point, but good to turn it up.
Thank you. So, we are moving, is there anything else that you want to just say, Mary Jane?
No, I didn't know if anybody had more questions for me.
Anything else you want to ask her before we move on?
Okay.
Okay. So, we are going to move into citizens' comments.
And when I was doing this, I was referring to, it's five times on GateHouse Media, they just implemented something, so if you get five free articles.
Oh, that's what that was.
After that, you.
I think I got an email about, from, I was like, where's this email? I didn't know, I didn't read your email clearly, but it was GateHouse, yes, that makes sense.
The only comment I had, this has been a pet peeve for quite a while, but we have bigger pressing issues. When you Google "Maynard Mass School Committee," if you're trying to find an agenda or a meeting, you can't, it's like, it's almost impossible. The first two are just dead websites. Well, one's a dead website, the other one links you to the town website, the third one links you to the active school committee website, but it doesn't have the latest meetings, so just could try at some point.
It's on, so what, actually, thank you for, because what I noticed, I was going to have it in my members' comments, but when you go to Agenda, it goes to the 2018-19 defaults, like, it redirects to that, instead of going to the higher Agenda folder, like, if you go to the menu for a school committee, you click Agenda, it redirects to that year. I wonder if we could just maybe have it just redirect to the higher Agenda folder, and then you can pick, like, 1920, because I, I think that's what I had seen a couple of times, like, oh, where's our year, when you click Agenda? Maybe that might help.
Thank you.
Hi, Anne Alexopoulos, I have a incoming kindergarten and a second grader. I'm sure everyone heard about the whole, like, new tick virus in Maynard, the one child who, I can't even remember the name of that.
Paulson?
Yes.
I heard it was a man that.
I heard it was a, I don't know.
I heard it was a kid.
It was a toddler, that's what.
Yeah, it was a Bible child.
Oh, okay, last night they were saying a man, but, yeah.
So, I know this was addressed somewhere previously, about how a lot of the kids from Green Meadow have come home with ticks, and that it just wouldn't be effective because of the chemicals that we can't use to spray, but there's tons of other things that we could do to help avoid this from happening, and one of the reasons why I'm bringing this up is when I researched the disease, it's not like Lyme's disease, where it would take, like, 48 hours for you to get lyme, it could happen in 15 minutes, so, and it's not like lyme, like, it causes swelling on the brain, it causes a lot of awful things, and obviously, it's rare, but it happens here.
In Maynard.
Right, and we don't know the details, I guess, they're not releasing, like, if the child got it here or where, but I was wondering if we could talk to, like, the health department, not our health department, to talk about, if we could teach these elementary school kids how to, like, check for ticks or remind them to check for ticks after recess, where do you go that you can get ticks? A lot of the kids play in the woods, and they might not, like, after school, like, they'll run out and go in the higher grass, and is there anything we could do to get rid of all that leaf debris in that, in that area between the trees and the parking lot, or even around, like, the playgrounds? Like, there's tons of really awful leaf debris, high grass, and not only the Green Meadow Fields, but Fowler, the grass is super high, like, so high sometimes that, like, you don't want the kids to go play in the playground, because that's how high the grass is. So, is there any way we could address that? I understand if we can't spray chemical-wise, but I feel like there's other things that Maynard's not doing, and because we're now have this high rate, not only mosquitoes, but the ticks, that we should be doing something else. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, then, we are going to move into our next agenda item, which is a Green Meadow update. So, we did start to speak to that in discussing the pre-K roof and the events, so I brought that up in the chairperson's report, so that people could, and Mary Jane just spoke to it, so I don't know if there's anything else that you want to say in more depth about that. We do have the Green Meadow Future Committee here, but, and I don't know if there's anything you'd like to say in relation to that, and then we can talk about some of the other things that have been happening in relation to Green Meadow, so.
I do want to mention that I am still waiting for the, I got an email yesterday, they said they were going to let us know by today, so.
You're still waiting on the report.
I haven't received it yet for the engineering report.
The report?
Yeah. So, I do want to mention that I have not received it yet, so I just want to let you be aware, but again, he said it was yesterday, I still don't have it, so I'll keep pounding them.
I had, I had a question about, I have the floor plan.
Yep.
And where everyone is going, but I guess I'm wondering what's happening with the three that are in the pre-K wing?
Those are strictly adults, there's no students in there.
Okay.
You know, I sent to the people that are in those particular rooms, I do not want students in there at all. So, those are the ABA, I'm not sure who else, I'm not sure.
So, it's, yeah. Katy Perry, the BCBA, there is a conference room for Patti Tuig, who is the team chair, and who's the third?
The third, what's the Andrew Close Library?
Right.
Just the local reading.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, so.
No students will be using those.
Okay, so, that's really the only thing that we're concerned about, because I'm still even concerned about, even just having adults in there, so.
And again, the adults can certainly use it, once the snow load is determined, and hopefully before that time we'll know, but right now it's perfectly safe, but again, we'd have to revisit it certainly when it begins to snow.
So, that, that's a plan, is to have them figure out what kind of load, or?
We don't actually know the exact extent, right, until we have the engineers' report, so.
So, again, and I don't want to take the chance, I didn't want to start, let's put kids in there.
Right, right. No, I get that.
So, they're fine now, until at least the snow, and then we'll know further.
Okay.
So, that, and they, and they're well aware of that.
Okay.
Good question.
So, Natasha did, from the meeting, you did kind of have some takeaways that?
Yeah, I did have some additional stuff, I don't know if this would be.
Yeah, I think that either, and then we can see if there's anything that the Green Meadow Future Committee, Meghan Wilkum, would like to say.
Yeah, no, absolutely, so I'm going to just quickly share a little bit of, let me pull that up again. So, as I mentioned earlier, the sediment in the room, there was a lot of, there was questions that were raised, one was the report, Mary Jane, thank you for.
I'm just clarifying, this is the parent, the pre-K kindergarten parent session from Tuesday.
That sounds right. Questions were raised about, you know, looking forward and going, going ahead and planning, and obviously recognizing that there's a lot of frustration, but being positive that we're going to be making strides going forward. Couple of things that, Ken, Ken Esserbrook was present, and I know some questions were asked of him, just for community sharing with the public, but some of the things that stood out, that I made note of, was that he didn't know if there would be money freed up within the next six to nine months, but there would be a lot of interesting conversations that obviously we need to have, that the October town meeting might be too soon to get debt exclusion included, that the building survey, he was confident that it will happen, that the town is working hard, and to quote him, no one is sitting around reading the Boston Globe. So, I wanted to make sure to share his verbiage, verbiage, because it just, you know, expressed what their, their, he was, he was there, and I was appreciative that he actually was able to make that. And that there was indication that the issue, as it's raised now, may accelerate the funding piece as it relates to the fire station, so that is something that they're obviously mulling over, as being the finance committee, which are important issues for our town to consider, but also as it relates to how do we, how do we fund and how are those conversations evolving? So, that's really, that's all I had, and Josh, you know, I don't know.
You know what occurred to me to just say is, I just want to say thank you to the Green Meadow teachers who have continued to just step up, so I can tell that they were in that meeting and very collaborative, and this is just, I know that this was just yet another kind of like, oh, here we go, after so much of that, so just thank you to them for all that they did.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that as well, which I have made, I put in my members' comments, but it probably now is a good time to highlight, the summer was extremely difficult for many folks, on many levels, for many reasons, and I don't think we need to get into all the nitty-gritty about all the many reasons, but folks were wearing different hats that were not their preferred necessarily, but people over the summer were showing up, working so hard. Kyle was there on Tuesday evening, and I know Michelle wasn't, wasn't there, but, you know, everyone was very much praising, the appreciation, I mean, aside from her dealing with all the financial pieces that she had to deal with in relation to the FinCom and all those deadlines and year-end closing, she was also trying to coordinate with project management and us, and when the superintendent was down, and Jennifer as well, being on-site at Green Meadow. You know, there was just a lot of, a lot of difficult pieces, so, you know, was it a perfect process? No, I don't think anyone realizes or is assuming that that it was. I think I want to just acknowledge the folks that did step up and, and get us through the summer, and make sure that this project finished on time, although it was painful the way, I feel like that was the biggest disappointment, was that we were in the home stretch, and, and so all the hard work that led up to it, I know that, you know, it was just.
I get to just celebrate that.
I think everyone was hoping for celebration, and it just felt like it was just taken away from the community, and, and so that was, I think that's part of the emotional piece to it as well, is that there was just so much urgency, the Green Meadow Future Committee, the project guideline, everything that you guys had done, and just everybody had such a hand in it, and I just wanted to say how thankful and grateful I am, just to acknowledge those, those things. Yes, everybody, I mean, the community input and collaboration and getting, you know, keeping us up to date and aware and asking those hard questions that sometimes aren't very intuitive, if we, you know, you see things through a different lens, so teachers, paras, everybody, it really was a very hard summer, and I just wanted to thank everybody for their, their little piece in getting us through it.
Can I just say something? I, as I said, I got here late, but when I got there, everything that teachers needed was there. I mean, the community just kept donating and donating and donating chairs and books, and, as I said, some wonderful parents made chair covers, I just couldn't believe, they're such a remarkable community, you, it's, everybody stood together, they did a great job, so thank you, thank you.
We're not done, but I just wanted to take a moment of, to acknowledge the positive pieces that demonstrated that.
There's also been two community beautification events that have occurred.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I mean.
Uh, sure.
All right.
Fun and dirty.
Yeah.
So anyway. And I believe there was also, did we mention that, that the walkthrough that happened in FinCom was able to come?
Yes.
Mauro and Lydia have been doing walkthroughs throughout the summer. Um, and so I don't know if there's anything, um, anything else you want to say, anything else you'd want to say about the, the pre-K roof in particular, and then we could move on to some of these other items?
Uh, we've got kind of our.
You've got your.
Like update question type thing that we typically do, if that's okay?
Yeah, yeah, you can definitely do that. I just feel like you guys, we don't always want to put that on you.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Sure, I'm, I'm sticking, helping stay on top of some of the items too, but we appreciate what you, what you help us with.
Um, one more thank you to throw out there, the, the custodians, and I'm sure you meant to mention that, but the custodians did an awesome job this summer. Uh, we were at Green Meadow a lot. It was extremely hot. Um, it was not a fun place to be. It was very dirty work. Um, and I, I really felt bad for them too, you know, getting right up to the home stretch, looking forward to, to bringing everybody in, and then it's like being at mile twenty-six point one and getting tripped.
Yeah.
So I did feel bad. Uh, but they've done, they did yeoman's work over the summer. Um, Kyle, Michelle as well. Michelle, at our last community cleanup event was, and Kyle, were both moving. I mean, they were in jeans and t-shirts and moving classroom furniture around.
Above and beyond.
Yeah, really, everybody really went above and beyond, so kudos, uh, straight across the board. And thank you to the community, to, to everybody that came out and helped with the community cleanup events. Um, we had, we had probably thirty to forty people in the first one and twenty to thirty on the second. Uh, so we had a, a real good showing considering that it's a, you know, a nice summer day in August, um, so.
And we had many more that wanted to be there.
Vacations, I know vacations was difficult.
Scheduling schedules, so I think if we, I, I mean, I reassured people that we would continue to do it, um, to have more in the fall, and they were, they were um happy to hear that because they want it, they want to contribute. So if we can keep going, um, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and so we have a list of things that are, that are kind of outstanding that we want to keep on our radar, um, but specifically on the roof, the other thing that I did want to mention is that, um, as the chairperson said, I did talk to the town, uh, to Greg, the town administrator, um, and he said that he is going to try his best to get the RFQ out within the next two weeks, um, so that we can start at least a process of the design work. Now, again, to be clear, the RFQ does not mean we're committing ourselves to funds, that's just getting qualifications and there's a process, because we do need to, to make sure we have all the funds nailed down, um, to be able to execute a contract for the design work. Um, and then on the roof itself, I look forward to working with the finance committee because I have, personally, I have quite a few ideas as to how we can fund the roof now if we needed to.
I have a question for you about the RFQ, um, and what the study, the envelope study, what, how is that different from the two thousand and six report that was done? Is it the same, it's just an updated version?
No, so the, the envelope study is the same thing as a design essentially, they're called different things. Um, you need, when you go to do a large scale construction process, uh, project, you need to develop a set of plans and specifications so that you can publicly bid it. Um, so you need an architect to come in and do a study of the envelope, um, identify elements like structural analysis, uh, what your roof system is, do you have any hazardous materials that need to be controlled and disposed of properly? What type of roof system, because there's quite a few even for a, a flat roof, there's quite a few different products out there. Each ones have different warranties and life expectancies, and, and this is even more complicated because we have to layer in what our long-term plan is for Green Meadow. So it's not as simple as saying, give me the best roof that'll last as long as possible. We may not want a thirty-five-year roof. We may want a ten-year roof or a twenty-year roof. Um, so, and we may not want to do the entire roof. We may want to do different pieces of it, um, all depending on what our long-range plan is.
And did, is the envelope study, the envelope study, as we had previously discussed, is the whole building, right?
Yes.
Is there an envelope study that can just be done on the roof? The more critical, I know it's maybe more enhanced than just a structural engineer, but obviously I'm just thinking about what makes sense more in the immediate, um, you know, if it's funding for the, the survey, you know, is there a way that we could do? Is it, I don't even know, but is it possible? But is that, does that happen?
So the vast majority of the, the fifty thousand, if you will, um, is the actual design and specifications for the roof itself. The envelope, the reason we're calling it envelope study is we do want, we had recommended a visual inspection of the perimeter to make sure that we don't have any water infiltration um in walls, fascia, that kind of stuff. Um, quite frankly, that's, the, the fascia, the gutters, downspouts would be part of the roof design anyways.
Secondary, okay.
The only other part that you're really looking at is you're having the architect do a visual walkthrough on windows, make sure there's no caulking or anything like that that we need to do. Um, it's, it's a very small part of the overall project.
Got it.
But to be clear, and I think this is an important thing to state for the parents um and for folks that are concerned about the rest of the facility, um, one of the things that I had written in on the, the original RFQ was that the scope of work was to include an, a structural analysis of the entire facility, just to make sure that we're safe. So for folks that are, that are concerned about the rest of the facility, I think that um we need to make it clear to whatever designer we get on board that the first thing we want them to do is to complete the structural analysis to make sure that everything else um matches what the visual observations are from underneath, so.
Thank you.
Is the two thousand and six you're talking about report, the AARA report?
No, the true.
Tape.
Yeah, yeah, so that, because it looked like that's an architect firm, right?
Yes.
And so that's where I was a little confused on, um, it, it did talk about like roof and all these other aspects, exhaust and, and so forth, but it didn't, um, didn't go into all the, the granularity that you're talking about as far as options for roof, it just, which is like kind of like a grade per se?
Yeah, the tape report is a building assessment uh that was done in two thousand and six, submitted in two thousand and seven, um, and it analyzed every building system from the roof down. Uh, Mary, you probably remember, um, you were, you were here working away back then, so.
Yeah, when we were, when we were looking at the new high school.
The high school.
Um, Tape actually looked at all the three buildings to see the integrity of all of them and to give different options for what to do with the high school, so.
And what I found interesting about that report was, and again, we talked about going back, that's just where, um, how the information was shared.
Yeah.
In there about the structure at that time.
And then actually, the other thing I will say about that report for folks that, that have, uh, have some time, if you're, you know, having trouble falling asleep, it would be a great reading material, but all jokes aside, there's a lot of great information in there about uh the physical system, um, your HVAC. It's actually fascinating to read because a lot of the issues that we're dealing with now were called out in two thousand and six as being needed, as being critical items to be addressed right away.
Interesting.
So not that we wanted to own the past, but certainly as we're trying to advocate for the investments going forward, we've got plenty of.
History.
History to be able to justify.
It's data.
Yeah.
It's an important point of understanding for.
And I don't know if it's, um, and I know you guys sent me an email just recently about the folders, so I, um, I don't know if it's available on the Green Meadow, um, I know we have that transition where we're moving, or if it's on the old one, or if it's.
It says, I just, I just got it.
On the new one.
For when he sent it, so.
Maybe I can add it, I can add it to the, the Green Meadow Future Committee folder.
Sure.
Um, just so that folks who are interested to see that, and I don't know.
That would be good.
Um, be, so people can have a reference point of what some of the history is building, because I, I imagine not much has changed.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Hasn't gotten better.
I have a question. Um, Josh, I have not heard back, and I, and Michelle's not here to ask, and I don't know if you know this, but um the HVAC, when they came and they took apart all of the units on the roof, and they were going to make a list of everything that needed to be replaced or fixed or whatnot, do you know, has she received that list yet? Do we know if we have an estimate or anything?
I don't. When I was there last week, um, the company was back out. I was there, so on the Friday that um Mary Jane met with the staff, um, I was there actually taking pictures of the HVAC company because I wanted to show people that, you know, schools, MPS was working on all that. Um, they were up there doing the inventory. I saw them back there uh three or four days later, um, but I suspect they've got quite a bit of work to do. That tape report identified even back in two thousand and six that most of those had already failed.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of replacement work that's going to have to happen.
Okay. Okay, oh, no, I was just gonna ask, um, so one of the situations that, that we had been dealing with was that the staff didn't know the ventilation systems, and they were putting things in front of them, and think, how are we going to prevent that kind of stuff from happening again?
Um, so the safety committee is putting together.
Okay, perfect.
A, a handout, and I think.
For every single class.
For the teachers, yeah.
Okay.
And it's basically going to be, this is how your room works, don't tape over the duct that exhausts air out, don't put things in front of your univent, don't put things on top of your univent, don't, you know, put tons of coats and shoes and whatnot, you know, that sort of thing.
And so it's going to stay with the classroom, so as we change staff, it's not going to be, it's going to be other people that will also be aware. Okay, great. Perfect, thank you.
I think we should reward the people that we go in and then we see that they're doing it, because they're like, here, you get donuts this week. You did!
We give grades. Wouldn't that be nice? Grades right on the door?
We have discussed with the principal of leadership and operations, um, that while he's walking through the building and doing observa, his observations, that that's a part of his report back to the staff, um, praising um places where we're meeting expectations and then helping staff to, to figure out how to move things around when, if we're not meeting expectations in that capacity. So that is something that we want to have a regular check-in, and then they'll report up through the leadership team, um, and that's to be able to, we're not going to put a grade on the door, but.
No.
Pass.
We'll do it behind, we'll do it behind the scenes.
And, and should we be incorporating that into the Fowler and the high school? I mean, I know they're newer buildings, but systems and things like that, we, I'm thinking, I'm just trying to.
What a bad idea we can look into.
I think, down the road, so.
So, um, do you want me to just, I, I mean, we can send an email, there's things that we just need some clarification on in terms of just confirming that this, these items um were completed. I know there was discussion about entering, like entering them into school dude, and we've had some good conversations with Michelle about how we were going to do that, because I didn't want to duplicate any tickets that were already in there, and I think Terry Morrison has volunteered to be the person that would be entering on behalf of our committee, so that's great. I think that's, I think personally, as an individual member of the community, I think that's a good idea because she's in the building, um, and she's going to be using the system as part of her job anyway, so.
And one thing I wanted to, this school, because I had a lot of thought about how this is evolving, because this is new, I just want to make sure that the, because I know like the expectation is that teachers would be entering in their classrooms, um, I'm trying to gauge or understand when Green Meadow Future Committee, when that would fall under your preview, because I would, I, what I want to make sure is that, um, like if there's something in the classroom, that that really should be the teacher entering it in, and that they're not coming to you to enter it in. Um, how do we, how do, do we need to, you know, have some parameters on when that would fall under your area? Would it be more about building, you know?
Yeah. That's what, I had some questions about that too, like the business process in terms of um shared spaces even, I mean, even without our committee, like, you know, just so that everybody understands.
Do you feel like, um, Michelle, Michelle would have an opportunity to be able to have that conversation?
I probably, maybe an email, and then we can.
Okay.
Sit and talk as a group and then maybe co-have some answers.
Yeah, I was all about talking about the business process in the spring, but I didn't want to.
It was, yeah, I thought about after that brought up last time.
I didn't want to distract from all the critical work, but I think that it's probably.
It wants to be effective, right? It needs to be working, and it needs to be that everyone's utilizing the best way, and you know, this is something that's going to happen in every building eventually.
Right.
And I just want to make sure it's thoughtfully done, where, one, yes, not, no redundancy if we can avoid it, but also um that, that the default doesn't be like the Green Meadow Future Committee, here, the teacher, here's my ticket, you entered it, right? So I just, I'm understanding the scope of what the expectation is for you and your, and your team.
Yeah, that seems to be fully on your radar, right? So you, you'll be able to get that.
And I'm hoping when we have a facilities director on board, a lot of these issues will be alleviated, but I think it's just an email to Michelle and myself, and we've been sit down, and then maybe we can give you a call and.
Okay, great.
Discuss that moving forward, because I think we're still trying to.
Navigate that.
Yeah, exactly.
Of course.
So I do think, and I think it's going to make, as I said, once we get the facilities director on board, I think that's going to make a big difference.
Great, yeah, okay.
Um, for some of the other things, then what would be the best way in your mind?
Yeah, we can just send these, I mean, these are things we've been talking about for a while, like airflow, just the pleaded airflow those are in, that, that, you know, all the univent, those things, and so we don't need to, I don't think we need to go through all of these items here, but if, um, we can send a list.
Sure.
Um, and just say, you know, yes, 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 these are all, we are all verified that we're done.
That you're ensuring that that's.
Yeah.
I'd like to know that anyway, so that's good.
Okay, great.
And I think we all should do a little dance that schools open hang on Tuesday.
I know, right?
And the teachers got to get in there and be able to get their things in order, and um I'd love for us to find a way to be able to just shower some love upon everyone. I think we should, we should talk about that.
I have to say before, the little additional kerfuffle, um, I was so impressed that everything was done by August.
We should still be impressed.
I know, I know. Yeah, I am, but, and I guess that allowed that kerfuffle to be kinda, yeah, I don't want to call it kerfuffle, but that's sort of.
Both those things can exist at the same time. Both this, we need to.
But the fact that they were on time, it allowed the opportunity to really focus on the, the preschool, so I'm really, really impressed with everybody and their, their effort.
Sorry, one other thing I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, so.
Yes.
Uh, the, so we'll have to wait and see what the structural engineering report or email or letter, whatever form it comes in, says, but if we do intend on keeping adults in there um in the near future, prior to snowfall, one thing I would recommend is, um, when we did our initial audit, the drains were plugged, there was a lot of water on that roof. So, uh, we need to make sure we keep the drains clear, um, because an inch of water is just as heavy as a foot of snow. So we certainly, we don't want to put water weight on top of a roof that is compromised if you're going to have people in those spaces. The structural engineering report may clarify all that for us, but, so.
Uh, one other thing, just so you're aware, I've been playing phone tag with the lawyer this week, we're looking at legalities of computer retrofitting and being able, Josh has been able to, has graciously offered to be able to assist with that in that building to ensure the airflow, the HVAC system is coming on at the right times and working optimally and saving us as much money as possible in the, in the process and energy efficiency. So um I am hoping, I'm planning, I'm going to be able to connect with her tomorrow. And then move that forward as well.
Just for the sake of, um, like, community understanding of retrofitting, because I don't think I understood retrofitting altogether, but Josh, can you share what that is?
I think that just the basic idea that we're trying to make sure the computers are, the computer's very old, so in order to make sure that it's, that it's actually making the building operate when people are in the building at the right times and all coordinated, it actually requires uh potentially a meeting to go in and, and work within the computer system so that it will actually be able to do that, so they call it retro commissioning.
Commissioning.
And Josh knows how to do it, but we need to make sure, if that were something we're going to do, that we can, that that, that we can do that, and I know it sounds funny to some people, but legally speaking, there are things that have to be considered.
Yeah.
So we're working, we're in the process of working that out, and Mary and Jane and And Mary and Jane and I are going to continue to be in conversation, we've been in conversations around that. So if we need to explain it in more detail, we could, but just.
I'll bore people if I get.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, let me just take one more note here and then I'm good. Okay, so let us move on then. Where next is, I actually did mention the superintendent search training, I forgot I had it in my chair report and then put in as an item so that people would know it was there and be able to see that we were going to discuss that, so it isn't an agenda item. But just to be aware, so we had some action items that I just mentioned, which was in the chairperson's report around the letter, they gave us a whole timeline, we'll continue going through that, focus groups happening in, starting at the end of September is the goal right now. We are committed to keeping that within a few weeks. It ends with us having, the end goal is January, February, that you're able to select a superintendent. And this is an optimal timeline, the time of year for us being able to get good candidates. So.
And I know we talked about when we had our, Jennifer, were you exploring about where we can have a folder on the homepage so we can put like repository for community to see information through this process?
Is it superintendent search?
Yeah.
What kind of, I don't, I'm sorry.
The timeline is what we were talking about.
Yeah, or like when we have like the focus groups, like what, you know, the dates, something that we can have, like, you know, because I know we're going to have a lot of information that's going to be kind of evolving and just a way that we can have a place for the community to see that. If it's like a survey, we can have a link to it that might be available at some point.
We can add a page to the website for a superintendent search.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. So just, I believe that next check would, if we wanted them to, they'll come out and they'll just, they'll run through the whole process to add a school community meeting? So they could do that as well if you wanted to explain it, but there's, after the focus group, well, we can definitely, I'm glad you mentioned that, so we can get this information in everyone's hands and you can see the timeline.
And we didn't get an electronic version of that, did we? Or did you, Jennifer?
I thought he sent.
That was a follow-up email.
Yes.
A follow-up email, okay, yeah.
So the community needs assessment happens at the end of September and the beginning of October. And then we define the candidate profile and then the screening committee is selected and that begins in September and selections in October. So that kind of gives you a sense of kind of the first start of it. And the end game at this point is January, February 2020 that we have someone in place.
And there'll be at least six focus groups that are going to be earmarked and then there'll also be a survey put out, hard copy as well as electronic to try and attract as much feedback as we can on the needs and what we're looking for in that.
So people can even email them, call them anyway. They're trying to be as successful as possible to allow to get all the community's input. So.
And should we have this as a standing, almost not a standing item, but just because I know, I know we are going to have to have it, there's some discussions like with the focus groups that we're going to be having to make decisions on, I think, anyway, at some of the meetings we talked about?
Yeah, I would guess this.
I don't know if that makes sense to have.
Just a quick follow-up, yep.
Right, just if there's, because there seems like a lot of evolving things are going to happen pretty rapidly, so I wonder if it would be helpful.
And we're going to have to figure out what focus groups we're going to want.
That's the next meeting, right?
Right, I have it on a couple, I wrote it down in my notes, but I was going to add it to the rolling agenda.
Right.
Okay. Great. And one of our next steps too, beyond drafting the letter that will go out and that's to advertise and post and begin recruiting, is choosing a liaison. And we have upcoming our subcommittees, item number nine, so we can consider that if you want to.
Is that the liaison or the two members that will be on the search?
Just the liaison, I don't think, I think the search committee was a different one. Yeah, I don't think they're going to do the search committees.
If that, we talked about being able to do, figure out the search committee in the, because we have time to be able to decide.
Right, I put a note on, I don't think it had to be done at this meeting, it was a different, yeah. I think it was at the end of September, I don't know, come out and look at it, but there was, it wasn't this one, yeah.
Great, so that's it for that. Next one. So our next agenda item is the upcoming literacy review committee and implementation of dyslexia law. And we have invited Jennifer and Carol to come to us on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
So Natasha is, and Mauro is CPAC liaisons, I don't think there's anything to say about that, or I'm just going to hand it over to you?
I don't think, I mean, yeah, nothing, and we had a meeting recently and this was kind of, this kind of stemmed about two things. One, at the school committee meeting in July, Jennifer, you mentioned about literacy committee and how that was going to be formed this year. And then I know other school committees are, or the districts are tackling the new dyslexia regulations that have for this year. And so part of the collaboration meetings, it has come up about, you know, developing some plans with guidance, obviously with DESI still soon or coming, but the feeling was that waiting for that guidance might, since it's unknown, would not be the best approach, but having those planning conversations now, and so this is kind of what brought us here today, so thank you both for that.
So thank you, Natasha, for that little snippet of update on that. So we talked about this last year, that the, the state adopted the law back in October 2018. And DESI is to work with the Department of Early Childhood and Education and Care to develop guidelines to assist the districts in developing the screening procedures and the protocols. That was way back in last October. I certainly expected to have stuff from DESI. You know, I've been attending regional meetings with the state director of special ed and he has not, I've been, you know, every once in a while Googling into the DESI website, there is still no guidance. What they have provided is a number of different links for screenings, interventions, IEP-related things. I've Googled some of those interesting, some states such as Arkansas and Alabama are ahead of the game. Very interesting.
It is very interesting considering we're not from the South, so I find that Arkansas and Alabama are leading the way in dyslexia. It does spark curiosity.
Well, you know what, I think it's, I was just surprised because Massachusetts has always sort of been ahead of the game when it comes to special ed, but all the other states follow just the federal law. And so it sort of makes sense that the federal law, that the other states are doing that, whereas sort of Massachusetts has just decided to institute it here and that we're going to do something about it. But I agree, when we've had some discussions with the special ed parent advisory group, CPAC, that we need to do something about it. It's been something that's been on my radar, I've been researching all year, trying to find, look at the dyslexia screenings that are out there and trying to find something that sort of hits all the components. I've had some individual conversations with some of the parents on CPAC, with Natasha as well, as far as, you know, what have you found, my sort of thoughts in this process. So tonight, what I wanted to share with you is sort of just like a little snippet timeline of, we're going to move ahead anyway, and if DESI comes out with something mid-year, then, you know, we might adjust the sales.
Just pivot.
But at least we, we want to do some.
Or we might be on track.
Yeah.
We might, yeah, we might be the pilot that they fill up.
Maybe once you find something, you give them a call, maybe you'll help get them going.
So there's a, we're going to determine which dyslexia screening. There's a couple I've come across that are very good. One that is recommended by the Dyslexia Association. And it has to hit certain, like six or seven components. Neither of the two that I have found so far hit all those components. So we want to find something that hits as many components and then maybe supplement it with something else.
Could you combine them, make the best?
Well, unfortunately, they hit the same points. What's missing is rapid automatic naming, which hits the fluency piece. So we want to determine which screener we're going to do, if I can get CPAC's sort of thoughts on that. We have a little subcommittee, I was hoping to have a meeting this week, but the, most of the people in the subcommittee, except for me, were on vacation. So then, so the second bullet is, we want to conduct the screening for all kindergarten students and students, other students in grades one to three that we've already identified at risk, whether it comes through the teachers or for some other avenue. Do that kindergarten screening by mid-October for all kindergartners.
And is at risk, is that, is that something that is, so I'm trying to understand, is that with the, like the building-based would be part of that gathering?
The student study team?
Right, would that be part of the determining at risk?
So that could be, but essentially what we would be looking to do particularly in the fall is that we would use our traditional assessment methods of the DRA and the DIBBLES that we're already doing to identify students who need intervention. And instead of doing the screening for all students in grades one through three, when we use those DRA or DIBBLES data and we identify that there are some skill gaps that we're seeing there, then we can conduct the screening for those students more in depth.
Like Title One folks?
It's like an overlap, it's sort of like an overlap or intersection of providing more Title One data. And we do this frequently where there's a screener that's given to all students and then for certain scores or for certain skill gaps that we're seeing, we do a more intensive analysis of where that's coming from and why that might be. So, but we are going to be using some overlapping resources with Title One to be able to add this, which I think is a great increase in our early literacy skill pieces to be able to have that come forward.
So then, after all the screenings are done, then we want to start meeting with building base teams to review the data and determine what professional development may be, you know, that we might need to do, what kinds of interventions we might need to do. Then in November, from November to January, this again is approximate, is to share some of the, a summary of the data, action plans. I think the CPAC subcommittee will be somewhat part of this on an ongoing basis. And then implement some professional development interventions. Last year, we participated in the Gab Lab Dyslexia Study. We received some money for that, that we could use towards that professional development. I have contact, I have emailed and called Dr. Nadine Gab to see if she is available to be able to do some of that PD. I thought that would just be wonderful, sort of, you know, somebody that is on the very forefront of the, you know, what's really important in the screening, what you really need to look for. That if she could do some of that for us, I think that would be ideal in my mind. But there are other professionals out there, such as Dr. Roberta Green.
I was just going to ask, don't we consult with Dr. Green? Is she, does she have any input into the screener piece at all? Or like what might tools that might be?
I have asked her during the year and she hasn't come up, she hasn't found a screener other than what we found, what I have found, and I can't remember what I found was part of my own search.
Right, so nothing that was more comprehensive?
No, no, but what she was, did, was able to share were like, what are the skills first graders need to have? So, and it, there's a big section in there on phonics and literacy, you know? But what I, in conversations with her, what I've had is, you know, what, what kind, in relationships to phonics and hearing sounds and distinguishing sounds, what should preschoolers be able to do? What activities can our teachers do? And is there anything that we can add? Like one thing I've recently heard is that kids don't learn nursery rhymes anymore. But nursery rhymes are a big part of hearing the rhythm, the rhyme, the same sounds, you know, so, I don't know, I don't know. Do we sing nursery rhymes in preschool anymore? I don't, I haven't been since my kids were little, I've been in preschool. At least the times that I have been in ours, I have not heard this, singing nursery rhymes. So those are little things, you know, what else can we do? We can do screenings, but are there little tidbits that we can ask teachers? You know what, during your time of transitioning within the class, you can play some little sound syllable games, you know, orally with the kids. But that's sort of a side note of some other things we can do, professional development. And then I'd like to reassess those students that we had identified at the beginning of the year as possibly needing interventions, reassess them in January, February. End of February, evaluate some of that assessment data, determine next steps. And then, you know, next steps might be at the end of the year, assess them again. And then certainly I see this whole process as really being a, a starting point in always sort of reviewing, what are we doing? What information are we getting? What's working for us? What else do we need to add? How do we need to change? And then we have the ongoing K to five literacy program review, which is the rest of your packet.
And so this piece of it, as Carol and I have been discussing over the last several years, the challenges that are coming forward, being voiced by parents and teachers and how we make sure that we're meeting all students' needs in a key area of literacy development. We've been looking at our M-PAS data and our other common assessment data. Rather than implement something for the sake of implementation, let's review and see what we're doing and see where, where gaps are, where are opportunities for improvement? So I adapted this from the Medway Public Schools Curriculum Review Program. It's a bit more of an in-depth look at our programming and essentially there's three components of it. The self-study phase where we go through with a team of teachers and administrators, looking at our own programming from everything, from curriculum alignment to the standards, to what instructional practices are we using to teach those and what does our data say about those? We also look at resources for the program, do we have enough resources? One thing that is now a benefit that we have, that would have been a gap early on, was a comprehensive phonics program pre-K through three. We now have that with the foundation, so it's things like that that we would be looking for to identify, you know, where are the places where we need to add some, some components in? And then what we do after we write the self-study is we have a visiting team come in so that it is not simply just us looking at the data. That would be literacy experts from surrounding districts and other people who have an expertise in reviewing these programs. We chose to do it in this way rather than have an outside auditor come in simply due to the cost, but it's also a great professional development opportunity for our staff to communicate and to hear from a visiting team as well. So I'm interested, this is the first time I will be coordinating and organizing that in a district. It's not been a process in curriculum review that I've been a part of, but I think it will bring some really great resources in and have someone else come and look at what we're doing. And then after we get the visiting team report, the team essentially sits down together and identifies what the action steps are for programmatic improvement. And this is obviously not a two-month process, we anticipate hopefully having the visiting team coming in in February or March so that by the end of this year, we can have their report back to us and be able to engage in some conversations at the end of the year and over the summer. As you read through the documentation that's here, they are identified points where the team will be reporting out to the school committee very explicitly on this work, so it'll be an ongoing update to review our program and really figure out where the strengths are and where the, where the gaps are that we need to shore up.
The, the committee, just want to understand, so just make sure, so the committee of the school, not the visiting, but that would be in, what would the makeup of that be?
So that would be under, on page one, where it says members of the self-study team. It would be the assistant superintendent.
Self-study.
Or designated, but it would be me.
No, I just don't think, I wasn't sure what it was called, so.
Yeah, no, it's the self-study team.
Self-study team is the school.
So essentially it would be administrative leadership, it would also be instructional leadership in terms of our teacher leaders or, and other teachers who, hopefully one from each grade, who have expertise in this area and are interested in doing some of this work with us.
So is this the literacy review and that, is it really geared toward the dyslexia situation that we've got?
It's looking.
Or just looking at the whole?
Yeah, it's really, it's really looking at all of the standards that we are responsible for in terms of literacy development. We know that concerns have been raised around phonemic awareness skills and things of that nature, so we're sort of accelerating the implementation of some, some assessments related to dyslexia in that capacity. But essentially what it would do, and it would say to us, this review would say to us, which it would have said two years ago, you're lacking a structured phonics program pre-K through three. You need to implement one and the action plan would be, okay, we're going to implement those pieces. What we're really looking for is to discern where the gaps are in terms of what our students are able to do. We've talked a lot about writing in terms of our assessment data over the last several years. When, when I do, and our teams look at the curriculum analytics, we're looking at where some of those gaps are, we're seeing consistent gaps in writing, we're seeing consistent gaps in conventions of standard English over the last several years. The question that we need to now answer is why is that happening? Interestingly, our reading standards are often at or above the state level by five to 10 points. So that is one set of standards that we seem to be consistently doing fairly well in with students, even when you disaggregate by students with disabilities as well. So the question becomes, if we're seeing consistent gaps in writing, which is one we've talked a lot about, what is it that our program is doing that is helping students get better at writing so we can continue to do those things? Where are there gaps or opportunities that we can add additional pieces in? Is it that we need a more structured program? Do we need to have, so one piece that could come of this is that a lot of the writing is coming now from relation to informational text. Do we not have enough thematic informational text for students to be reading and writing about during their class time? And therefore, when they get their essay in third and fourth and fifth grade, where they have to be pulling that information to prove a point, they don't have that skill. It's not because they can't do it, it's because we haven't taught them that. And those, we don't know that that's where it's coming from, that would be an example of something we might find, is that a lack of resource is leading to a lack of skill on the part of our students in this, these.
The visiting team would help, help, like bring that understanding or find those holes?
Yeah, so really.
That's the expectation?
Yep, so really the visiting team piece, our self-study will do a lot of this, we will dive in and look. What's nice about the visiting team concept is that you have an outside set of. What's nice about the visiting team concept is that you have an outside set of eyes coming in with no, you know.
No stakeholder.
No stake, and they're just looking and seeing what they see.
Independent.
Um, and so it's nice to have that, that objective perspective of, hey, this is what I'm seeing. Um, when, when you're doing writing instruction, um, you're, you know, doing small moments and not connecting, if in fact this is the issue, not connecting it to the science standards, which is what the prompts have been on over the last several years. Right? So those would be the kind of things that they might see.
Is there any, um, opportunity for, um, I guess strategies or some type of thing, like for teachers that they can do, like professional development on how, like, at-risk, um, students possibly that they can, uh, I know that we've talked about professional development in different areas, but I'm just wondering if that might be a way we can hone in a little bit on, on, on those pieces that maybe that for the at-risk, um, folks.
Yep, absolutely. So one of the things that we will see, cause part of this is looking at our data and diving really deeply into our data, not just our bench, not just our assessment of MCAS, but looking at our benchmark assessments and doing more progress monitoring with the assessments that we're using so that we have, we're having continuous conversations around what students are able to do. And for those who are not able to meet that expectation, one of two things happen. One, the teacher tries a strategy or the teacher teams try a strategy, a different piece. Or the team identifies, I've tried all these strategies and I'm not sure what the next steps are for this particular learning style or this particular issue that children are having. And then we can reach out to outside professional development providers or other experts internally within, um, Green Meadow to be able to do some of that work.
Is Dr. Green possibly a resource for any of that as well?
Dr. Green's expertise is, is really focused on learning disabilities. So she would be. You know, some school psychologists are more broad, some school psychologists go towards the clinical end. Her has, hers has been really focused on learning disabilities. Um, dyslexia would fall in that. Um, you know, she, she would.
And she's done professional development. She did some for us last year. Can't remember the title of it, but it was very, very well received.
Okay.
Yes. But we're bringing all of the kids up in this, not just one category. This is to bring all the students up.
Yeah, cause what you find when you look at at-risk students and the deficits and the challenges that they, that they have, when you use strategies that improve their skills, you're improving this, the kids who are not yet demonstrating those challenges. Um, and, and really what it is, is you're looking at each, each student or each group of students in different ways to say, okay, I taught it this way. Um, I'm still seeing some challenges here in this area. Let me try something different because we know all students learn differently.
Well, I think also it's, I mean, when I think about like inclusion and stuff and, you know, some of those things, anything that you can do that can be a classroom type of teaching where it's not a child who has to get pulled out for, you know, one-on-one interventions in a way. I think a lot of those skills, if you can apply it in the classroom, that again, some kids might, I mean, have a need more for it, but other kids can certainly benefit. I think that would be a fantastic.
And I think we can do, we were talking about some, the, the dyslexia screening that we might use. You know, it, it is, as I said, six or seven components. When we do that across the kindergarten, we might find that there is one, one component, one of those sixes that, um, you know, that a bulk of our students are missing. So, okay, what do we already do? What are some other word games or syllable games or sound games? Not necessarily games, activities, whatever, um, that we can add to what the teachers are already doing. You know, or maybe that's a piece of some focused professional development. Um, you know, is for the teachers to, you know, um, know what this dyslexia is all about now that the, the science has just improved over so much over the, certainly my career. And, um, but for the gen ed teachers, for them to learn what, what's part of it, you know, um, of the, of the dyslexia or are, you know, all the phonetic pieces to it? Um, and some of the different kinds and things that they could be doing if, you know, it can, they can self-reflect on, you know.
Sometimes you don't know until you, you know.
Exactly, you know.
We need to use data to be making decisions about our programming, about our instructional practices. We need to, um, have more of an eye on what used to be called an RTI structure is now called a multi-tiered system of support structure. Um, cause we like to change names of things in education just to confuse people.
Everybody on their toes.
Um.
It seems new.
And, and really, and really what it is, is you should have between seventy-five to eighty percent of students accessing your expectations with tier one or classroom instruction. So if there's any, if you're having thirty or forty percent of students who are expressing a challenge in a specific area, then that tells you that, okay, let's look at what we're doing instructionally, right? If you are getting seventy-five to eighty percent of students who are, are meeting proficiency in a particular area, then you look at what's happening with those students who are not. And we look at interventions for those students specifically and those groups of students. And so this is a lot of the work that we've been working towards when we've been talking about data-informed decision-making. Um, I'm, what I'm excited about this very specifically is that I think it will begin to unpack, um, for, for us what we are currently doing and how that is meeting the needs of students and what we can do better to meet students' needs. And I'm really excited to have these conversations collectively with staff to do that.
Oh, and you're, I love that this is, you're, it's very clearly setting and operationalizing and demystifying this process and also allowing everyone to engage in it so that we're, it's at the same time that you're doing this, you're learning how to use that data, learning how to do that in, in a very, that, and we've been talking about that. And, and I think that, um, teachers wanna help every child.
Absolutely.
And being able, it's just having, really making sure that the tools are there and the process is there for them to be able to have what they need and to be able to look at that and figure out the mechanisms.
Right.
And for each child.
And I'm also incredibly grateful that we aren't waiting for the state. That, cause time is a-wasting for these kids every year that we just wait, so.
Especially when you hear like as each school, you know, they go up and it just is not, it doesn't get any better each, each year.
So even if it's not perfect, it's a great step in the right direction. Yeah, and somebody, a phrase that somebody had said to me on another project was we have to, um, flag the plane and build it at the same time.
Oh, I think we use that expression for my work all the time. We just used it literally the other day, I wrote it down.
I just saw a video on that myself.
What, um, would we be able to get electronic version? I just wanna send this also to CPAC, if that's possible, just so they can, cause I know a lot of them couldn't be here. Um, so I wanted to see if I could send it to them.
Yeah, that's a no. And then also Natasha, you wanna see if there are certain points where you'd wanna come to present that you know, we could add that to our calendar?
Well, I, we, I know, um, part of, yeah, a little, um, my members comments did finalize the, uh, calendar that the school committee is gonna be having. And there is an opportunity within, um, to have, uh, the director of our student services come out thinking about goals. I don't know if this is something, maybe a goal? That would be, you know, like a goal for the year, cause it's very, has very clear timelines. And, um, what I would also wanna know, now you talked a little bit about, um, um, the fund, like the grant, using money. Is there other funding implications here that there's a school committee that we need to be cognizant of, um, financial impact that we need to be thinking of on our radar?
Possibly, you know, and, and that's where, you know, that's part of the plane that is a very fuzzy vision for me.
You had to just like throw like, like right now, like thinking about, cause I, these are great, but I'm sure there's dollars associated with some of these pieces.
So currently for both components, we have built in, um, for example, to conduct the screenings and do all that, we have, we have funding that's already allocated to do those types of things. So we're adding this piece in, um, with a, a different staff member who's helping out in some ways. I think the reason that it's fuzzy is because we won't know until we get the data to see what, where it is and what the challenges are. Because if we get, if the, talking about dyslexia in particular, if the screener comes back and shows massive gaps in lots of different areas that we, when we overlay that on the curriculum review piece, we don't have the resources for the literal books or tools or games or we have to do massive professional development for our staff, then those are things that we will come forward with in that capacity. I don't anticipate, based on our conversations, that, um, at least within the dyslexia screening, that it's something, and please, if I'm wrong, don't hold me to this, um, that it's something that we can't sustain within our professional development budget that we have or a resource budget that we have. But I know, if I know one thing is that you're always surprised in it.
We need the data, we need the data to understand.
To understand how to allocate our resources.
What that, what step is, okay. So there is a possible financial impact, but we have no more information.
And, um, I think that you were looking at bigger numbers of students and therefore connecting it to curriculum and resources. Um, I, I was thinking of, you know, are there, on a smaller scale, are there, um, an unexpected large number of students that are red flags all over the place? You know, where it might be fifteen students, you know? If, if we identify fifteen students in kindergarten, I'm gonna be extremely worried. Um, you know, that, and, and when I say by red flag, not just little yellow flag, let's, let's hit this little area, but there's several areas in that screener that show that they're very weak. You know, um, using the old RTI model, you would provide them with some supports. And then you watch their progress, you know? If their progress isn't, isn't, if they're not making their progress, making the progress you expect them to make, given some daily support, whatever that daily support might be. If they're not, if you're not seeing that progress, that's to me a bigger marker of more of a, of a significant disability. If a student makes very good progress, then it, it might be just indicative of, um, you know, maybe missing some curriculum, missing, um, some school or something. And, you know, I think I, we would have a little bit of a better idea after we, um, finish the screening and then begin reviewing it. You know, so that's just about budget time.
Like right before November?
Yes.
In that October, November period?
So I do wanna, um, say then maybe you could.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Work on timing and this has been an excellent discussion, very informative. I, we have some other agenda items, so I just wanted to see, we're over time on this? If there's anything else anyone wants to say.
Who's gonna wanna ask a question?
Are you familiar with the Fluency Factory?
No, I have not heard of that.
Okay. Um, I met with a man, Richard McManus. He has created this program, um, and I have spoken with parents who have children with dyslexia who, um, feel very strongly that this would be a great program for us to look into. He, um, has offered to come and do trainings, um, at Green Meadow. And it would be a one-day training that would then help the teachers to utilize in their everyday practice ways of screening children and, and what to look for. Um, I can send you his information.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and we, if, if you wanna look into this, um, he, he did not discuss costs, but he did say that he would do what he could to make it attainable for us.
I know, um, I didn't, um, Ms. Pimenta had, uh, she had mentioned at some point about, um, a consultant. Um, I don't, I'm gonna say, I don't know if this is the same person.
This is him.
Is this from Maine?
This is him.
Oh, is this him?
This is him.
Okay, okay. So I didn't know, I didn't know the, the fluency, but I remember a consultant, but, um, so I didn't have the details on that, so, okay.
Good. I'll look forward to that. Thank you very much. So that might be able to be incorporated into the professional development? Is that what we're thinking?
Yep. And it also would help with the screening costs because if we train the teachers, then they can do it in the classroom themselves and so on.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to define, finalize, and delegate subcommittees and liaison roles. We are returning to the spreadsheet, um, that, that Mary put together for us. So I sent that to you earlier, so I relocated it for us, so.
I got that, I was at appointments all day.
Oh, no, no, it's no problem. I knew I had it, I was.
What, do you have a job?
So, um.
What I'm done tonight, yes.
We currently have the, the budget subcommittee set. And on that we have Lydia and Mary. We have the policy subcommittee set. And on that we have Lydia and Beth Lynn. And we have the CPAC liaison set. And on that we have Mauro and Natasha. So as of right now, it is an, uh, a couple of things to have in mind. One, uh, one liaison that we will have this year will be for the superintendent search. Um, just also to have in mind, it occurred to me that when we were looking at the process for that, we will have two members on the screening committee for that search. And from their, what, how they spoke about that, it sounds like they, generally speaking, those members are chair and vice-chair of that committee and that that is a, a big commitment. So just have that in mind, depending on your consideration of, of, of that position, of those two, um, uh, roles as well for the superintendent search.
So are we going to have a liaison and two people on the, or are we just having the liaison until we establish the two people on the, because?
The liaison is for the overall.
Process.
Process with NESTC that they'll, they'll, like, if they're pushing up materials or anything, it goes through that one person for us.
Okay, so we. I misunderstood that.
Yeah, I did too.
I thought that for now, we would be using Mary since she was, um, had been in touch. But once we appoint the two members, that then one of them would be the.
Because they don't wanna call them dealing with the search. They only wanted two people, not three. That was my understanding also, but.
Yeah, well, we don't need them to do the liaison tonight. We can clarify that point, cause that, that makes sense to me. The screening committee is only going for a little, they're not going for the, the whole time. But, um, it, someone should definitely, could definitely play that role. We have this, this two people.
Do you want me to ask them? I'll ask our.
Yeah, why don't you ask them, since you're the interim liaison. So we won't deal with that tonight, but we have that in mind.
So the other ones are, that, so negotiations was one that we talked about and that we are actually negotiating custodians this year, aren't we Jennifer?
I thought we.
Didn't we just do a one-year extension for them?
We have a one-year. Um, the process is that we need to finalize the memorandum of understanding with the town in order to begin that negotiation. So likely you should anticipate starting negotiations.
In January, maybe.
Hopefully in January. Um, otherwise we'll have to, once again, extend that.
Right, yeah.
So negotiations in January.
Okay.
So that might be. So does anybody have a hunkering for that one?
Well, I wanted to think, oh, are we deciding that now?
Well, I mean, we should stop making decisions.
Well, I wanna, I think we need to define first, right, which ones we want?
Yeah, I think we do, cause we've got too many.
And I think we need to first define them and then we can vote on what we're doing. Because I know the subcommittee, there's a lot of, um, you know, people have, have added to the list. So I don't know if that makes sense.
Well, like, I don't think we can have six subcommittees, correct?
That's a lot.
Cause each of us should be doing two.
Well, then that means you're done.
Yes, I am.
Well, and, and I'd like to be on the wellness, I'd like to be the wellness liaison again too.
Well, that's the liaison, yeah, yeah. I think we need, cause we've got six subcommittees listed. I think we should leave it, we should keep it to five. And I don't know which one we added, because, so.
Well, there's something at the bottom, Lydia, it looks like building.
Yeah, but that's for the liaison.
Oh, oh, cause it's building, okay. So it's all liaisons.
Yeah, that's all liaison. Those comments are all about the liaison.
Yeah, so I, I had, um, the strategic planning or I just thought that would be, as we're having these conversations, you know, that require a lot more. I mean, right now we have, like, facilities, you know? Is that something that, do we need a subcommittee for facilities since we're anticipating having a lot of roofing conversations? Or is that something that can be solved through liaison?
But is that not, I mean, as of right now, isn't that kind of what the Green Meadow Futures Committee, they report back to us?
Yeah.
Not when we're thinking about like funding and planning, about roofing, you know? I don't, I don't know. We don't, I haven't started, something with Ken, you know? I don't know if we need to have like a subcommittee regarding the town finance.
Well, isn't that what budget is?
Fincon.
I don't know. Is that, is that, that's what I'm wondering? Is that what we're expecting? The roof, the roof conversation will be part of the budget subcommittee?
Yes, it already is part of the conversation.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, so just, I think that a couple of things that we should have in mind to guide ourselves. One is that you can have ad hoc committees. So we could have something that we start because we know have something time-limited that we wanna make sure that we're. that we want to make sure that we're considering, so if there's something that's more of like, an ad hoc committee, or if you wanted to include other members, other key stakeholders, it would be more of a task force. Other thing is aligning, considering aligning with our goals for this year. So that's the other thing to have in mind. So one of the, the two additions that I see here are communication and strategic planning. What we've had before were policies, negotiations, curriculum, and budget. So we talked
Is it strategic planning, all of us, though?
Yeah, so I think that what we were considering was having, like, a committee that's looking at our goals and priorities, and considering, and maybe folding curriculum, rather than having just a curriculum standalone, instead move into like a goals and priorities committee, that considers whatever are the things that are kind of the, that year's folk eye.
Right, you can have a charge with like one or two here, like this year, we're looking at strategic, you know, student retention and communication, maybe that could be folded under the strategic planning.
And it might be that they're helping then coordinate some of the other subcommittees and say, hey, you know, here's some of the things and ensuring that they're pulling in.
I've seen that at other school committee, I don't have them, but I remember seeing that strategic planning is often a subcommittee that they have at other school committees. And it seems like it can be flexible in that sense, because, you know, your needs can change, but you at least have people who maybe can be dedicated to dive in for that.
And it might end up being something related to curriculum, but then it allows us to have that be, right here we have as a note, and I believe this was from Natasha, student retention.
Oh, yeah.
Looking at things like that, foundation funding, new foundation funding liaisons you have. So that could also include, we had a question that could also include communication, given that we don't want to have too many committees. Communication could also be like a
Social media liaison?
Yes, it could be a
A little different.
I wonder if the strategic planning can be, could also be communication, like if you have, you know, student retention.
I want to have it so big that you don't get anything done.
Yeah, that is one of the things that I'm hesitating about.
Sometimes it's better to break it out a little bit, because it's an awful lot getting under that strategic planning.
Yeah, so do we need a separate communication subcommittee?
So, if we're each on two, then how many can you have? Do the math.
Five.
You can have five?
Yeah.
I'm glad you know that, off the top of your head.
I mean, I don't want to do this, but do policies take a backseat? I mean, or do they become part of strategic planning, or goals and priorities?
Policies, so
For a year.
There's some, you have to, I think
Oh, no, I'm saying, I don't want to do it, but I'm just, I'm just plain devil's advocate.
Yep, now I get what you're saying. We will need negotiations this year.
Yep.
That could start as the MOU, and move into negotiations, so that could be the charge of that group.
All right, and because Mauro and I had discussions with Greg and others over the summer about the MOU, since I'm cut off, I can pass that information on to whoever ends up on the negotiations team.
You can also attend the committee and just not sign anything.
No, that's too difficult.
Okay, so then, are we all in agreement that the idea of having curriculum subcommittee could move into the strategic planning?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, actually. Yeah.
So then, the goals and priorities committee then would not?
Well, I guess that's the, we haven't quite, we have, we could call it goals and priorities, and look at what are the goals and priorities for this particular year, as opposed to strategic planning, if that feels more
So you're thinking adding a goals and priorities subcommittee?
Yeah, and taking out the strategic planning and curriculum and putting those
Fold under.
Under goals and priorities, that would be the goals and priorities, would be the communication, I mean, the curriculum and the strategic.
But I think, isn't it, you're just renaming it then, because basically, you're still taking, I mean, to Mary's point, you just have a whole bunch of things, and how much are you going to get accomplished?
Well, we've got to either eliminate or join two of these.
So for instance, when we look at our goals, and we have social emotional learning as one of our goals that we were just talking about at our Cisco workshop.
That's part of the curriculum.
So that could end up being there, so that we're monitoring those things and paying attention in that, so it ends up not being the world. It could be that, anything that does come up that would need to additionally be addressed, that we feel like needs to rise up, we can create another subcommittee now, or we could do that as we move forward, we can set these now, and then look at, everyone think about what else they think needs to happen, and set another one.
Well, I mean, whether you call it strategic planning or goals and priority, I think they're both the same, you know, both of them are, you're planning, right? You're looking at your, whatever your focus is, like strategic planning, looking at your goals.
But is curriculum strategic planning?
You can, you can, strategic planning can be anything, whatever you want to plan strategically about.
It is in our strategic plan.
Right, okay, so I think that, I think it absolutely could be, but again, you can call whatever, it sounds like it's the same function, just in
It is.
A different way you're referencing it, so.
Just, I think that when you say strategic planning, it sounds like we're doing strategic planning, what we're going to be doing is focusing on, like, monitoring and reviewing and seeing how, and like, actually implementing, trying to really make sure that we're tracking what we need to in relation to goals. Economic excellence.
Something, what do you want, address social, you know, you could come up with a different name that's be all encompassing.
Okay, so who wants to do what?
I'd like to do strategic planning.
We're all doing two, I actually wouldn't mind doing that one either.
Five, six, but we still have six.
No, we only have five.
No, we have six.
Policies, negotiations, budget.
The curriculum is going to go under strategic planning.
It is, we've decided on that?
Yeah.
So there's five, yeah.
Okey-dokey, awesome. Who else, who what?
Mauro, you haven't, you haven't claimed anything, do you want to claim anything?
Well, I originally had said that I wanted to do curriculum, but
But now we've taken it with strategic.
Well, with negotiations, it doesn't look like there was a lot of, you put that as your number two, you want to take negotiations?
Yeah, I'll do that, but I still need another one.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, just so we can
Fill it in while we're
I do, okay, fill it in. All right, so I don't know how to change the numbers, though, because
You don't need to change the numbers.
Yeah, don't worry about the numbers, you can just
In the comments, just put in who's doing what.
I just put Mauro on negotiation.
Wait, but, isn't this appointed by you? Are you appointing people?
I am technically appointing people, we're having the discussion right now, because we as a committee
I'm not writing it in yet, then.
I already wrote, yeah, it just, it's there, we can vote on it afterwards.
Decided to have this discussion to set the subcommittees to be appointed.
Mauro, you're on.
Me?
Yep, so your negotiation.
That's fine.
You want to do that?
Yeah, no, I, no, I mean, that was my, my number two anyway, so that's fine. And I'm not, and I'm not entirely sure what the communication, what that looks like. It looks like everybody except for Mary has it as a reason, so it's like middle of the road. Would it be like public relations or something?
Yeah, is that posting on Facebook, or?
Or not even, it's making sure that like the principals are doing their letters, or
I think we want to make sure, like, when I think of communication, I think it could be two ways, it's the how and the what, also, so like, how you're getting information out and what you're getting out, like, and make sure it's effective, streamlining it, you know, all those aspects of that make communication timely, you know, there's a whole, a lot of aspects of communication, not just the medium and how it goes out, but I think as a district, there's, you know, a lot of, but that would be what the communication subcommittee would tackle, like, look at those priorities and where we are, where do we want to be? You know, do we have too many platforms that we use for social media, you know? Do we, do emails, do communications go on email default, like, I don't know, there's, I think there are a lot of those pieces. But what I was thinking when I see communication, not just the words and selves.
Then do you, do you think that that communication rubric that I was working on this past year, would that fall in there? Instead of policy, because that's kind of where we were putting it.
Possibly, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, you want to?
Did I convince you to be on it?
Yep. Okay, Mauro got two.
Okay, great, and then, so we have some folks, Natasha, you're interested in strategic, this is strategic planning.
I, yes, I am.
Mary's interested in it. I definitely could be interested in it, but I feel like I'm, I can join, so I don't, I have to admit that I don't feel like I have any experience with negotiations to be able to be useful for that, it's just not my wheelhouse.
I mean, I can, I can do it with Mauro, the negotiation, it wasn't really my, actually left a blank, because I didn't but I certainly, I mean, I am somewhat okay with contracts and legalese, so and just relationships with unions.
Yeah.
Do you want to see if they want
Being a union rep before, in my prior life.
If you'd be up for that, I could definitely, I could do communication.
Okay.
And then, what's that leave us with? We need
So you're going to do, so you and Mauro will do communication?
Yep.
I think that might be
And then that gives us everyone.
Yeah.
Then it's, now it's a good liaisons.
Oh, I missed my turn.
So I might appoint you all that way if I decide to, I'm just kidding. Unless we have a Any other changes as we go, I will appoint us that way. Okay, and then, moving on to liaisons, Mary wanted to be wellness.
Just a continuation, yeah.
So maybe first, before we jump in, should we define the liaisons first, and then, because I get, this is where the list kind of grew a little bit?
Yeah.
Oh, I see, I hadn't come all the way down to what you had here. Okay, so we have wellness, social media, GM, school council, Fowler School Council, MHS School Council, CPAC liaisons, which we have set, building committees for the three schools, community, those are two with question marks, facilities, and Mauro will be the NESTC liaison once we clarify that.
Yeah, I had thought that instead of having separate, right, exactly, instead of having separate liaison for the, each council, and then each building committee, maybe you just have like one liaison for the school, that would be for both, so you have some, a liaison for the school council and the building committee?
Mm-hmm.
And that kind of, like, not to expand beyond, too much beyond that, so it doesn't become overwhelming, but do you think that would be too much to have?
Oh, you can always, I feel like we could try it and see how it goes.
Start it and see how it goes.
I would say, just if we're looking at how we're, ways we're consult, I feel like social media could be covered under communication, as we're talking about the communication one.
Right.
So I feel like we could cut that
Liaison role altogether, I mean, yeah, okay.
Make sure that that's understood in the, so if we get rid of that one, we put the buildings with the councils, so then you'd have wellness, you'd have a building liaison, you have the CPAC, facilities.
Isn't that kind of
Building?
Well, if we're doing the, yeah, if we're doing like the committees, so if, like, I think if we build like Fowler and, and the high school.
I did have somebody that volunteered to be on one of those two committees, if we created a similar to what we have at Green Meadow, either the Fowler or the high school, and I think, yeah, so to, just to
Right, and so you have like the school committee member to be a liaison for that with the council, yeah.
If you wanted to, yeah.
Okay, so then, yeah, so then I think in that case, we might, won't need like a facilities
I thought that's what the building committee goes for.
Right.
Well, I, yeah, I think that if we have them at each school, then that would be
Do we need them at each school, because can't we have maybe the chair of each one of the building committees, similar to Josh, coming before us for Green Meadow? Can't we do the same thing with Fowler and high school? Have, so that we don't really need a liaison, from, they just be coming before us periodically to tell us what the needs are and that.
I don't know, I mean, it depends on, like, if they, because there's a lot of times, there's communications that are, I mean, Green Meadow obviously is more of a bigger need, but I mean, there's some things in between that need some facilitating. I don't think it hurts to have a school committee member, you know.
Available, even to talk to.
Right, right, just some, maybe even bounce, you know, hey, I'm thinking this, or, you know, I think that, that helps the, it work better. I don't know if the experience, this, like, it's really hard to replicate the Green Meadow situation, but
Let's not replicate it.
Yeah.
So let's do this, we'll do wellness, have a building liaison, for school council and the committees, we have CPAC, and then the question is about a community liaison.
Yeah, I don't know, Lydia, what were you thinking? What were you thinking about?
That could go under communication, I was just thinking something that would try to engage the community more, get them to come to more meetings, getting them more involved, like, we need advocates at the state level to help with getting funding changed, and just trying to engage more people, so not everything is falling on the same people all the time. But, again, that can be a pet project, that doesn't have to be a liaison thing.
Go under communication and go to
It could undergo, I like that idea.
Yep, I do actually, too.
That gives another, a little extra dynamic to the communication committees.
Okay.
Or the strategic planning.
Mm-hmm, depending on the particular, both, but definitely.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so I'll take that out. Right, so we don't need that as a liaison, that's part of the
Right, yeah, so we have wellness, Green Meadow, a Fowler, a high school, and the CPAC, so four liaison roles now. Great, I'd like to do Green Meadow, if possible.
Wait, I'm going to take out the social media one.
Well, we took out social media, we put under communication, and then community would become, and we're not dealing with the GM building.
We're not.
I guess, yeah.
Okay.
Includes school council.
So Natasha's doing Green Meadow School Council liaison.
If you'd like to do that, someone that would like to do Fowler.
I'd like to do the high school.
You'd like to do the high school?
Yeah, and I'm wondering the reason, just to give, because I know when their councils meet, and the Green Meadow one's later, so for me, when I have a relationship there, but also I know a high school, like, meets earlier, the council, it's like 2:30, and I think the middle school is like around 4:30 or 4, so
So what about
Just considering those elements, if you're going to be a liaison for the role, just something to think about.
About Fowler. I don't know, I want to know the, we could always come back to it, if it doesn't seem like it's working out for someone, kind of swap them, but, so then we have the So if Natasha's doing this one.
Just got the Fowler School Council.
Yep, and if Mauro did this one, and if, apologize to everyone, it just really helps to see this visually for us, so then just make sure you got it.
Can we just call it the, like, the building, Fowler Building?
So I, I'm happy, what do I just do?
Me and Mary, right?
Are you both on wellness?
Oh, I don't, isn't it two per, no?
No, for the liaison, it's only one.
Oh, well, except for the CPAC.
Yeah, CPAC has
But I want to, if we, it doesn't mean that we couldn't have two people doing wellness, because there's also like safety, there's a couple of that.
What did you do?
Wellness, yeah, so I was just doing it because I was on it last year, but there's nothing to prevent you from also doing it, if you wanted to be also.
There's nothing
They're easier at seven o'clock in the morning, just to let you know.
That's not happening. I will, wait, don't we have something left, don't we have another?
Fowler, the Fowler School Council.
Give me Fowler. I'm not getting up.
Well, Lydia, and also, were you, weren't you on the school council before Fowler?
I was, yes.
Okay, so
All right.
Not a big leap there, right?
No.
Is, and just as an offshoot, is there a regular schedule of, is it on the big calendar of when the school council's a meeting? Because just if we wanted to just go and just be, because I always seem to have a difficult time.
It's not, I don't think it's on, for Green Meadow, every school is a little different.
But it is, I know at least for the high school, there, every week, when they send out their letter, it has all the dates for the whole year, and each month they take
There is a different link, though.
So can I ask that again, I know every year we ask, and it seems to start off this way, but can we receive the letters? Because, I mean, I don't have any students in school, and so I miss a lot with the letters that get sent out by the principals and that, and
Even everybody here. So maybe the, the school committee email address can be included in all principals, building and superintendent, I think that, that may be the
Would be good.
Right, yeah, because sometimes, you know, people get emails, that's a very good point about, I got this email, like, I don't have kids in the high school, so it's hard to
Yeah, like, you would get Green Meadow emails, because Scarlett was down there, but I didn't have a Green Meadow child anymore, so I didn't get the same emails.
Okay, so we got that?
Perfect, on a good place.
Oh, yeah, get me out of wellness.
I think we've got the, we've got the, um, free loans, so you're gonna get, or we'll get you out there, you're out of there.
Yeah, that's Mary.
So I think we got those set, liaison subcommittees, and we'll worry about NASDAQ next, we'll get clarification on that, what happened? Oh, why do you keep showing up there again? They want you.
I guess.
All right, well, we're gonna do that after, anyway, so, we are done with that item, now we're going to move on to talking budget. There are two things here, um, so one, um, was in relation to what you wanted to be able to discuss, Lydia, as part of the budget subcommittee. Um, and I just had some background that we've, we've had that has come up, was in relation to, um. Looking at, um, the new, the, the budget formula, and that that will create, uh. The way it works out for Maynard is that we end up with, uh, less money with that, um, formula. And, um, we've, in, in considering that, and looking at also, we've had a few for ourselves, some additional shortfalls. So with all of that, um, Lydia wanted to bring forth some considerations, we wanted to talk through also, ma- um, looking at, one, we have Kate Hogan and.
Jamie Eldridge coming, yeah.
Twenty-sixth, and considering before, we've had like, we've had tri-board meetings to start discussing budget early on. We do right now have Ken Estrobro, who's the chair of the FINCOM here, who graciously and often comes to meetings to check in on, on, and, uh, stay informed. Um, and so just considering how we might move forward, so next steps in regards to, one, just really looking at what we're talking about as far as these numbers. And, um, Lydia had some particular considerations in relation to the shortfall this year, so. That's kind of my larger picture kind of framing of this agenda item, I'll let Lydia get into her particulars, and then we can see what we wanted to do for discussion from there.
Um, so I basically wanted to address and just raise the fact that, um, the town. Has recently learned that we are about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, um, short. Because when we got our state aid, um, it was not what we had originally projected, um. And that's because things have changed at the state level in terms of the formula that they use to determine funding, um. We also had a. Large surprise with, um, out of district placement, and this is a one-off, and it's, um. It, I think will be in a separate category next year, I'm not sure, but what happened was, is a kid had, a student. Was choicing into another town, and then it turned.
I just wanna make sure, um, before we go into too much detail about, um, special ed, um, because it's a very specific, it's hard, it's easy to identify, just wanna.
Okay, so anyways, there, there was a cost associated that was unexpected, and is, um. Skewed our, um. Assumptions on.
The projections.
The projections, right, so, now that the town has to come up with an additional a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Just for this year, and I know that our budget is already frozen, um. I still feel like we need to make some sort of good fe- faith effort in reviewing our budget. And see if there's anywhere that we have any money that we can contribute to, um. Meeting the a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar shortfall. Um, I think we also going forward in determining our budget this year, need to be mindful of the fact. That we are looking at a one point, one million, one hundred sixty-eight thousand dollar. Shortfall next year, that, um.
Is that based on the eighteen percent projected, um, or the?
Well, no, this is, this is for the town, this is the town.
Budget, sorry.
Yeah, so, we, on the budget subcommittee, we are discussing in the past, our, um, budgets. We have adjusted each year, there's a nine percent increase or a one percent increase, the school usually gets, I think, like, a four or five. Percent increase, we have to look at that, and chances are, we will not be getting the increases next year that we have gotten in the past. In fact, we may not get anything.
So just to be clear, just to say, it, it's, it's called an increase, but it's actually been, um.
Level funding, right, level funding.
Cuts.
Little service. But, so, part of the problem is that.
Cost of, yeah, costs are up.
Our student enrollment, as with most of, with the state, um, has decreased. And so the chapter seventy money that we could normally plan on a reasonable amount. Has been cut back, not only from us, but from, from everyone else, so, um, so that's one of the bases, but.
Um, so we need to begin discussions now, I believe, in looking at our budget as we set our goals and set our priorities. For the coming year, we need to get out ahead of this. And plan for a shortfall, not plan for level funding, and really determine what our priorities are in terms of our s- our students. And our schools, and what we can afford and what we can't afford, and we have to start making some really hard decisions.
So I have a question about, um. I know there's some, some areas where folks are having conversations about having a growth budget, or presenting a growth budget.
Where are those conversations happening?
There's folks in the community.
And we, we've done that in the last bunch of years, because it's actually. Uh, very helpful to see what, if we are actually part, that's actually part of student retention too, so how are we staying competitive? And, and, um, and meeting the needs of the students, often requires a growth budget, if you're gonna consider that. And even if it ends up meaning that we end up with some cuts, it helps to see the full picture of what the schools. It's almost, it's almost not doing our due diligence not to share.
A growth, well, we.
What, what we actually need and what's being considered in the school councils.
Maybe we do both.
Right, right, like, like this, well, I, I think that, what I was trying to get at is that, um. You know, I think as a school committee, we are charged, obviously, with, um, student achievement and all those areas, you know, thinking about student retention. And I think, um, to your point, Bevlin, that it's important that we demonstrate what that should look like for Maynard. Um, reality could be di- totally different, right, that what we, what comes back is not that. But, you know, we think about like facilities, you know, that obviously, what we've done in the past, maybe that, that has to be, so. I just wanna make sure we're cognizant of all those pieces of, that we're not going into, uh, um, budget conversations about cutting right away. Before we are actually looking at how, um, how we can stay competitive, but I think it's definitely a reality that, um. We certainly need to have that microscope lens over things maybe we haven't looked at before, I don't know what those are yet. And, and I'm guessing, but in the budget subcommittee, it would be evolving conversations with Michelle.
Every year, we try and do something, um, something different to, to hone it in, we've privatized the, um, the food service, we've, you know. Created the Oasis program at the high school to try and bring the students in, we created two additional, um, case program, uh, classrooms at Fowler. To once again, hopefully, you know, retain students and that kinda thing, so every year, we, we take a look at what we, the abilities that we have. And I totally understand what you're saying as far as the budget goes, my consensus has always been, the only way. That we're going to retain our students and prevent them from going someplace else, is if in fact, we continue to invest in our own school system. So that our students and the parents know that this is the place where they wanna bring their kids, so to make cuts. It, it's, it's, you know, just a revolving spiral down.
They're, they're parallel conversations that need to happen, right, right?
Yes.
So we know, we know that as a district, we need to be appealing to parents to have the things that, why people are leaving. Address that, I think part of that is data collection on understanding that more, for me, I've had conversations with a couple of folks here about. Um, honing in on that, and that could be part of that strategic planning, you know, thing. But I, I don't like to, I don't wanna be jumping the, the cart, whatever that expression is.
Cart before the horse.
Yes, where we're looking at cutting things before we can, you know, have a bigger understanding. Um, I think it's great that we are aware that things are. To your awareness, or to what you're saying, are, are, are tough, right? And I think last year, coming off of the heels of last year, certainly don't put us in a good position, um, that understanding is true, we have roof, we have all those things. I don't know the right way to fr- how we have these healthy discussions that you're asking.
I don't either, I don't, I don't know that.
You think when Michelle reports out, it would be a good opportunity, because that's, cause she'll be also having these quarterly report outs, um, do we need to be more, do you think more frequent? Do we need to have a monthly in the, in the, during the budget season, I don't wanna put too much on her, but I'm just.
That, I, I just wanted to bring this up for discussion, I haven't really put much thought into it beyond that, I mean. The thing is, yes, to your point, the schools are very important, and people want to know that if they bring their kids here. That they are going to receive a good education, but we also need to be aware of the fact that our infrastructure needs a lot of work. And we, you know, uh, still haven't decided what we're doing about the fire station. And there are all these other amenities that people look to as well, and, um. And the town is gonna be looking at their priorities while we look at our priorities, um, and we're gonna have to meet. In the middle, like, I.
Oh, absolutely, I also know that the exercise of the school councils, um, that's, needs to happen, and that's, that's something that. I think I wanna make sure we're having their input.
Right.
Um, when they, cause they're gonna.
More empowered than they have been in the past, I think.
And that's part of what we're, the expectation that we're talking, they're gonna be reporting out to us.
The leadership team too, the two, the, the, the two principals at each one of the schools, um, you know, Carol Gayhand, um, Jen. The whole bit, and obviously Mary Jane, but just to look at the whole picture, and, and again, while we're moving forward. What things can we, um, you know, can we hone in possibly, or take another look, total look at, I. I am one that is continuously saying that we need to constantly look at our special ed budget, and to look at our personnel. And to see how we can really do the best for the students, you know, like the Oasis program, I thought that, eh, those types of innovations. Are phenomenal, that, um, that we're doing the inclusive thing, so we're helping the students that are in the programs, and we're also helping the school system as whole.
Well, and I, I also, I think that if, if we're also looking at what a growth budget would look like, that we, we can use some of that. Those ideas to change the way that we're doing things, so that we can still get that, but do it a different way.
Reprioritize.
Right.
And I think also, I wanna think about, when you think about a growth, but, so if we are investing at some point, I'm just gonna, example has no concrete data point to this, but. We're investing in, say, expanding Oasis to Fowler, okay? Um, that might be a cost, right, to, to initially set it up, but what I also wanna make sure, we're, what we're doing is factoring in the piece that. What we might be saving for kids who may be able to return to district, um, possibly.
ROI, the return on investment.
Right, right, so, so it's like, you know, it's not a, it's, it's an initial cost, but it's a long-term saving possibly. Um, so those are, like, when you think about that, I mean, I think right now, Lydia, what you're talking about mostly though, is immediate cost, right, is the.
Yeah, I mean, and.
Short-term costs.
Not to belabor the point that I keep bringing up, and. The dual principal model, right, like, I still haven't seen the financials on that that justify having two principals. At, um, you know, a principal salary rather than a principal and a vice principal, right? I'm not saying it's wrong, what I'm saying is, is I don't have that, that.
It seems very unresolved from where we were last time.
And, and what I need to see is, okay, so we have these two guys, or two women, or a man and, what, people. We have these two people who are co-principals in a building, what are we, what are the cost savings for having them both at this level? Rather than having one here and one here, and is there a change? And, you know, is there a savings, and what is it, long-term, because. On the surface, I, I still don't get it, so that's.
I, I think it was an unresolved conversation from before, and I think we had tabled it because of.
Other, oh, yeah.
Interom and stuff, but, um.
So I think that also feeds into, if we're looking, not just looking at straight up dollars, but also looking at things like.
Earnings.
Yeah, and, and, um, and gains that we, so, they call that, and help, it's value-based healthcare. So you may not be actually lo- gain, it may not be, are you getting more value, like, you have more satisfaction, so there, there are softer outcomes that you're looking at as well. Not just the dollars, that also, uh, factor into the picture.
Right, and if having two, having the dual principal means that there are. Fewer disruptive student behaviors in the school, which then means that we have.
Exactly.
Uh, that sort of thing, like, if we can prove that, if we can show that and illustrate it. Because we don't need to just prove it to ourselves, we need to prove it to the community as well, because we are ultimately responsible for the money that we spend.
And just to that, that point, I don't wanna, cause it's not really totally related to budget, um, piece, but the principal model, so the, the first meeting. I think, not the first, one of the meetings, one of the early meetings of the school council for Green Meadow, we'll be talking about the survey, and there was some piece of that in the survey. So it would be helpful to see, cause if it's something that it's not, um, translating well to the community, then that can help, you know.
Do you wanna bring us back to the budget conversation? I get what you're saying about the data, but the thing of, I would like to say then, that that becomes a, in budget subcommittee. If there are things that you're looking at, not just that, but that was your example, right?
Yeah, yes, yes.
And I don't mean to cut you off, but if we, we, it seems like that may be something we wanna return to as far as, on two levels, one is from your budgetary standpoint. And then also looking at requesting, having a better understanding of the, what, what's being collected this year, so that we can get a fuller picture of that. And, and you'll be able to understand those kinds of things, so under, it's budget subcommittee, that is totally within your purview, and. Um, and I, I do suggest reaching out, Mary Merritt did do a bunch of things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, four, four years ago, three years ago now, she was trying to comb through things as well, and did a lot, so. Even just understanding some of her process might help you, um, and then we did do, um. A one percent matters document that I'll make sure everyone has, that showed last year, it was a request actually, Ken. It was really Ken's vision, that we ended up having this, um, document that could, that could help to illustrate over the last five years, the trends. And the difference that had been happening in the budgets, and what we were requesting and needed for growth versus, um, level versus what we ended up with. And then, um, uh, the other thing was that there, I know that in terms of timing, budget priorities. Um, we were talking about having a budget priorities protocols created, and I don't know if that would fall under your purview, because the school councils, once school starts. I think at their first meeting, we were saying, they're gonna have to have, start having that conversation.
In October, they're gonna be having in October, and so that they would be able to share back to.
I can elucidate some of that, but essentially, what we talked about at our leadership team, um, is that we're going to have, um, in October. Financing our future night again, uh, we'll get this information out to the community, but that was, if you recall, a couple of years ago. Uh, the financing our future was where we're looking at how education is funded, generally speaking, not just for Maynard. So we're gonna be doing that again, and then we're going to be doing a second joint, um, school council meeting with all three school councils. To align our, um, to have their, the conversation aligning our budget resources to our strategic priorities. Um, so that is October third and October seventh, I believe, again, we'll be getting that piece out, so we'll be in time, so that they can provide that information to you. Um, to, to be able to do that, so that is something that we did discuss at our leadership team meeting, um, in August.
And I know that, um, I had talked to Donna, um, October eighth is a Tuesday, and I know that's where she was thinking about. Having that budget conversation with school council, so I don't know if that aligned well with what you're.
I'll, I'll follow up with her, just, um, because the, all three buildings were supposed to be together to do this together, they would have.
Okay.
Separate conversations, um, so, and, and maybe it's October eighth, I could be wrong on the date.
Eighth is the two, that, that was just the standing calendar, when their meetings were for the school council, the eighth happened to be, that, that, that one was just designated. Was gonna be designated for like the budget one.
Um, so let me follow up with her and make sure that that's the case.
Okay.
Um, and again, it may be that I have my dates wrong as well, and we chose to do it at that point, so, but that was the concept of. Being able to provide some structure to the conversation, so that, um, because the school councils were expressing to the principals frustration. That they kept saying, this is what we need, and we kept not being able to fund it, um, so rather than sort of creating. This is, these are all of the things that we wanna have, let's have the broader conversation of what are our priorities, where do we wanna be investing the dollars? Um, a- and then when we do need to make decisions on, on budget, then we know that this was the sentiment of, um, the school councils collectively. Um, so, we, that is a process that, that we're undertaking with them for you.
Um, and one other thing that I think can be done immediately, and, um. One of the things that Michelle has said is that, even though the budget is frozen. There are some people who are still continuing to order stuff, and she has to pay the invoices when they come in, but. That is making it difficult for her to stick to the budget as it is, and it's going to put us in a deficit, say, by January, or, or whatnot. And so we need. And so we need to really come, either work on a policy or come up with some way of, you.
She has.
Yesterday, she actually, um, mentioned to me that she was sending letters to all of our vendors. They are not to accept orders unless a PO is sent.
Excellent, excellent.
She's already sent that letter out.
Okay, good.
And during our, um, leadership team, she went through very explicitly with the principals, um, that, the no PO, no pay policy.
Okay, good.
Um, we also went through our, um, timelines in regards to entering the budget. Um, and we gave a, a draft of a budget timeline, um, annually for principals to make sure that we are putting detail into those budget spreadsheets. Um, and, and she was very, very specific for the same reason. So yes, that is being implemented, um, and, and basically the principals have been told to tell their teachers, you know, don't put out any money unless you're, without a PO, unless you're okay with not being reimbursed.
Because she had told me about it, but I was, I didn't get the sense that she felt empowered to do.
Oh, yeah, she sent it out to 1200 vendors, 1700 vendors, something like that.
Wow, awesome.
She did it yesterday.
All right. Um, yeah, and I mean, that goes for us too, because I know that we have like less than 5,000 budgeted just for school committee, but when I looked for last year, we spent close to 15,000. And so, I mean, we, we need to be cognizant and hyper vigilant about what we spend our money on. And if it's just MASC dues, then that's it.
Then we should really utilize MASC. And they're free services that come with those dues. Um, yeah, so I think that these are, I appreciate your bringing that up, the discussion. I think that, um, appreciate the, um, steps you've already begun to put in place to align that and consider that. I think that we should, in the budget subcommittee, that would be, talk and see what they're feeling like we should do next because this, it's been, it's hard conversations for, but it's, it's for the town together to have them. We're the largest cost drivers, so it's very important for us to do our due diligence within that, but for everyone to be able to have the discussion together. And obviously, including the consideration, it ends up being about also considerations for capital planning, roofing, all those things, the fire station, the, so, um.
Senior Center.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I, I'd like us to see, one, talk and maybe if you all consider what, what you think it should look like when we have Kate Hogan and Jamie Elders here, and who else you want to have invite and have in the room from other town people perhaps? And, and then also, um, we could do that, talk about that in our next meeting. But then also consider, um, the Financing Our Future Night, does that get into? I, I feel like we need at this point to see, to understand the impact to Maynard, and I don't know if, it didn't really talk about numbers last time, right?
No, the concept was more to understand where school funding comes from. The reason we decided to do it again was for anyone, because it was a couple of years ago that we had it, was for anyone who was not able to participate. The more important piece is really going to be looking at, um, that's, well, I shouldn't say that. From, from our perspective on, on the school department side, looking at those strategic, aligning the budget resources to those strategic initiatives. Um, but we did want to, to make sure we were providing that education for this is where funding comes from.
Okay, very good. So that, that is an important piece. Uh, but then we need to be able to say, what's the impact and what are we considering right now for the schools? And that seems like that when we have Kate Hogan, Jamie Elders, is a good time to have some of that conversation and invite some folks, FinCom, VOS, I don't know if there's others, it would be good to be here for that, I mean.
Um, and that's September 26th?
Yes, September 26th.
And before that even, consider really what, what else do we, we've had, we've had tribe board meetings before to consider. Um, and I don't know that that's the right structure because you're doing your budget subcommittee work, but at some point, it seems like early on in.
Well, I think, I think they'll probably all want to be there, they, yeah.
So, any case, I would charge us to next meeting, maybe discuss it further, in the meantime.
Definitely want Michelle there, and we'll want Mike Guzzo to be there also, so if they're available, yeah.
All right, so anything else on that? I'm going to close this out of that item, and we're going to move into citizens' comments.
I, I have a question, we're talking about the literacy, um, program. First grade implemented the co-teaching classroom last year. Did you see and compare how those children did compared to the other first grade? And can, can we have like results on what, those interventions were in that classroom that might have been different than the traditional one teacher for the 18, 20 kids? Um, what, what programs they use? And is it beneficial to start maybe implementing them in all the classrooms?
Um, so we did, we did look at the success of the co-teaching model, and there was a significant, uh, for both the fourth grade and the first grade classrooms, there was a significant, um, growth on the part of students in that classroom. Um, that's not to say there was not growth for students in the other classrooms as well, but we did have, um, some students who were coming in with some pretty specific challenges, and we were able to, the teachers were really amazing at being able to help students gain skills in those areas for both the first and the fourth grade. In regards to the specific strategies that they're using, um, that would be part of what we're looking at when we do our curriculum review piece, would be to say, you know, what are the things that are happening in different areas? I do know that our first grade and second grade teachers are, um, certified in Wilson Level 1, and they'll be providing interventions, in addition to their co-teaching, they'll be providing interventions, um, for students with Wilson tutoring. Um, and so yes, yes, I don't have the answer right now, but yes, we can.
Yeah, and because I don't think last year, correct me if I'm wrong, last year, the co-teaching was, both teachers would be so putting in the classroom 100%, and it's going to be different this year, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, um, so I have a question about, a general question. I have lots of specific questions about, um, the literacy, um, presentation, but then I was like, have, have you guys discussed how we should, or what's the best way for citizens to ask questions about presentations to the school committee? I'm just wondering, I know that last year there were some instances where presentations were made, and the people that were involved in presentations, you know, they weren't, then they weren't present for the comments, and I didn't, and then it was like, whoa, that's not really the purpose. Like, the purpose is for the presentation of each of the school committees, so I just didn't know if you guys have thought at all about, so then, after the presentation, and people have questions, like how that should be handled, or?
Just ask them, and we can take note, and if it needs follow-up, you know, or, or email.
Tell you guys our question.
Mauro and I, like, it's like, like special ed, you know, we might be able to help, you know.
Okay, and then route it that way, okay. Because I didn't know if I should just take it and then do email like to, you know, to the building principal and then try to do it that way, but since it's a presentation to the school committee, if, if, I should just say it. Anyway, maybe we don't say that now, but just in general, like, if there should be some sort of, um, policy about that. Yeah, last year I know people were, needed clarification on how to.
Yeah, and that did come up. I'll, I'll check in with our pre-mask consulting service, because I feel like she had said something about, because that is, we are trying to keep, this is a presentation that's to the school committee and for that purpose, and we are looking for particular things, we're actually giving a template for them for what we're looking for. But it actually, um.
Isn't that sort of why we added the second citizens' comments though, too, I think, right?
Well, let me, let me check in about the particulars, because it, um, I, I, let me just check in, thank you.
Yeah, and if you're, I mean, everyone has a different takeaway from a, a presentation, right? You have your own personal experiences, so it's hard to know that, you know, always at a time, but if there's something, again, I think we had talked about maybe even posting, having a, a, a way to post some of the presentation materials.
Yeah, beforehand.
Right, and I think, um, that's probably an evolving piece, um, uh, as well, but I don't know if it's something that could be put in the folder or, or what, but, thank you.
One of the other things that we are, we have come to learn since having training and workshops is that the school committee meetings are open meetings held in public, they're not public open meetings. And so, um, we're finding out that a lot of other school committees don't allow as many comments and questions as we typically have. Now, granted, there's been reason for that, a lot of reason for that, um, but, um, I, I think that because of past practices, people have, have, they expect a certain degree of interaction, and I don't, for times sake, we may not be able to continue that.
Right, but, yeah, so I have four questions, follow-up questions about the presentation tonight. I'm happy to email, um, to whoever you would like me to, if I can get clarification on them. Okay, I'll email it to Natasha, thanks.
Thank you. I'll add it to Mary Jane, if you have.
Yeah, yeah, I'm wondering if they.
So the budget, I would recommend something, just my personal opinion, um.
We appreciate your personal opinion.
Well, this is going to get uncomfortable.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so here's the thing, we're facing a very large structural deficit projecting out, and it is a problem next year, it's a problem the following year, it's a problem, and it just keeps growing. Um, we are going to, as a town, need to make some serious decisions about how we balance that budget. There's going to be a lot of hard conversations that have to occur. One of the things that I would recommend as we prepare for that is we take a look, I, and this may be available, but I haven't been able to find it online, but, um, our enrollment projections, but also our enrollment reports, and to try to trend those, because there's a couple of things that I think is important when you're trying to make large end roads when it comes to budget reconciliation. Um, taking a look at your enrollment trends versus your staff FTE by department, administrative, uh, paras, um, all the way across the board, because the reality is that in a department that is predominantly staff, the only way that you make large cuts is there. And I know that's uncomfortable, and I, I know there, there's going to be a lot of reasons not to want to go there, but the reality is if you, if you need to make large improvements in your budget, that is going to be an area in which you have to look at.
Because we're predominantly staffing.
You're all staff, you're almost all staff. Um, there are very few cost control centers where you can make, uh, any kind of, um, impact without impacting staff, so. And that is something that many communities are facing right now, because many communities are facing declining enrollment. Um, and they're having to do staff analysis to determine where they're at and where they need to be. Just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Hi, about, about that, um, and I'm late to the party because I've been gone for a while. Um, there's 180 apartments being built on the Parker Street development. Is, are there any projections about the number of students that might be added to the student body? Because of that.
At the time, they were saying something like 43 students or something. I think, yeah, that's what they were talking about.
Well, that's not too, that's not too impactful.
But that's not the only, we have, we have multiple other projects.
Right, so just something to keep in mind, well, that, you know, we are declining, but I have a feeling we're going to be, uh, increasing, so.
I think that we're going to keep increasing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Good.
Um, when we talked about the Oasis program in the spring, um, they talked about maybe bringing it down to Fowler and Green Meadow. I know, um, being, um, an SLP for the last over 10 years, that a lot of times when kids go out, it might be because of behavioral or emotional challenges. Have we thought about the cost of bringing that down? Because I think I remember saying the first year we did it, it was grant, right? So we didn't pay anything? Can we get the grants for the other schools, or, because we used it for the high school, we can't get it again?
I mean, we can look at, we can look at, at different pieces. Um, it's essentially three FTE increase, um, per program. So that's just, just to give you a sort of an idea of costs, it's three FTE increases. Um, and the problem with funding salaries through grants is the grant goes away.
Right, so it was only like a one year, so you have to sustain it, long-term planning around that.
But I guess, has anyone looked at how many kids that we send out and that we bring back into the program after?
Yes, um, the Director of Student Services looks at that sort of annually, um, and in fact, we are starting a program at the high school, um, for a few students who are, who are coming back to, so it's a, we're increasing FTE but with a decrease in out-of-district expenditures. Um, and it's just making sure that we have the right combinations of students to be able to bring back. So that is an analysis that, that is being done.
So without get, um, without, without affecting anyone's privacy, is there a way for the public to know the, like, the, the kids that are outsourced, like what, you know what I mean? Like, what we could do as a town to get them back, like, special ed-wise? Is it because of, like, a charter school? Is it because of vocational school?
It's all of that.
Right, but is there a way for us to get, like, the town to get a reporter, or is that not, um?
Yeah, I know there's, there's information on DESI about, um.
That's how, that's pretty.
It talks about like.
And does ClearGov do that?
ClearGov.
Well, I think you're, you know, we paid for it, we did?
We haven't done that yet.
Oh, we haven't?
We're waiting for the presentation. That's the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
So I think for char, so I think for charter and vocational schools and those sorts of things, it's much easier. Um, what, what you're talking about with out-of-district special education programming, if there are clear trends, we can discuss those, but again, it, it's, so, I, and I, I'm not sure, I haven't dived this deeply into the DESI information on the website, um, that they have. I know they have trends, but I doubt that they have, in terms of trends of what kinds of disabilities our students are presenting with, but I doubt they have trends for, um, for the students who are out of district, what kinds of disabilities they are trending with, but that might not be true, I haven't looked there. Yeah.
Just like you're, you're doing with the reading program, diving into all the data and kind of finding the trends, it probably would be good to do that with our outsourced and special education, to see what programs we could bring in. Because we, last 15 years, we brought in some really great programs, and I think it was because of that, because we saw that there was a need and we're spending money, so why not bring it in and save money?
And I do know, when I came back on the committee, that was one of the first meetings that I had, was with our, um, special ed director, um, to, to talk about that, because for instance, we used to have the connections program that was for the students, because we're responsible for students with special needs until they're 22, and we actually had a program that was at the high school for those students to stay in-house versus us, um, bringing them out. But at the time, she, she laid out, obviously with the pri- privacy and that in place, but where the students were, so you have to have a certain number of students that are going to make it worth, worth, um, bringing in the personnel. That's why we do the case program too, so that sometimes our students go, you know that, yeah. So sometimes we bring the kids in, sometimes we have the kids go to other places, so. Um, so I think that she looks at it every year, but we can definitely make sure of that.
All right, then, I think we're going to move into members' comments.
Nothing? No, we've talked about everything.
Okay, do you have anything, Lydia?
I don't think so.
I mean, we've had, it's been, we've had a lot, it's enough, you don't need to have a comment.
Okay.
Wow.
Um, I just wanted to thank Michael Cutlowski for coming in and.
Thank you.
Recording our meeting.
Um, I had a couple of questions, um, were, a music, um, was there an update, a community update that was going to go out regarding the music program?
Um, I spoke with Mr. Roth about that, and he was sending one out, I can follow up with him tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, I know he sent it out to, um, us and.
Yeah.
And, and he, there was a plan to do so, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Are we allowed to share that, or should we wait for, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, so he'll, um, so an email will go out to the community?
Yeah.
Soon, okay.
I think he got just, we had that bike thing today, so.
Yeah, the, okay.
The rodeo?
Yeah, the bike rodeo.
It was very cute.
Yes, um, and I also wanted to get an understanding, um, about the, uh, the nurse situation at Green Meadow. I know that we, right now, have not been able to, and I just wanted to understand or have the community understand what, what the plan is in the interim.
Well, I can talk a little bit about that. I know we offered a position to a couple of nurses, but unfortunately, they, um, found that the pay was not satisfactory, so they, they didn't, uh, they didn't take, accept the positions. So currently, we are looking to the next, uh, candidate who looks, uh, like a good candidate, we're very interested in, but again, we have to go through the process of, uh, fingerprinting and, and core check, and that takes a little bit of time. So at this point, we're starting with substitute nurses for the first couple of weeks.
Okay.
At Green Meadow, right? Yeah, just making sure I didn't forget anything.
Okay, and, um, and the only other thing, which is actually not a question, but it was more for, so, um, Mauro and I participated in a collaboration meeting with CPAC, August, uh, 5th. more for, so Mauro and I participated in a collaboration meeting with CPAC, August 5th, 6th, one of those dates, I think it's 6th, and we were able to define a little bit more the, the buckets of subcommittees for them, and one of them will be that dyslexia reading. So I know that that will be an integral part, so I'm really excited for the work. I feel like we're making some headway there, and I don't know if you had anything really to add specifically about that, but I just felt like it was really good conversation. We got a lot on our agenda, you know.
We did have a lot, and we got through the whole thing, which was, I think, a first.
Yes.
It's great.
Yes, yes.
And I thought, I thought that there was, we had a lot of good, good communication and good.
Yeah, and I wanted.
Resolution.
And I wanted to actually, before I, let me go back and see, because I know, I wanted just to highlight what those subcommittees were going to be, just for, let's see if I have that. So we decided it would be a safety one. Let's see, here we go. So a safety Alice Plan one, a survey one, a reading instruction and assessment, which is including that dyslexia reading or screening, professional development and training, communication and accessibility, and then policy procedures and protocols. So a lot of what we talked about at our level is also going to be happening down within that collaboration. So I think that's a fantastic happening, and I think what the way, and I know Bethel, you talked about trying to be able to still participate a little bit here and there, which your name is there, so I just want to make sure you saw it.
I was emailing personally. It's very nice.
Yes, yes. Well, we do want to commit, you just like, you know.
I do appreciate that.
Yeah, you did, so, so you had, you were interested, and so, so that was really good to hear. And I think one of the other pieces that was talked about, that there was a landmark school in Beverly that does, they have a very robust like language-based classroom, and just not classroom, but also teaching or models for other areas. And I know Carol was connecting with them to see they also offer professional development as well, and, and so that was something that I was exploring.
She talked about that a little bit today, so I don't have all the details, but she did mention that.
Yeah, yeah, that's something that we, where we left off, that was a homework assignment for her, so. And then, other than that, just to echo again, my appreciation for everyone this summer who has really contributed to the many efforts in our community, custodians, everyone from every level, new people doing new roles, people doing different roles, the town as well. I, I know that Greg himself wore several hats, and, and, and so I think that was, again, not an ideal situation for anybody, but just appreciation for all of our community engagement and, on all levels. So, thank you, everybody.
I just have two things. One is that I think we, we, I think we talked about it here, that start having subcommittees, oh, actually, I think it was in our workshop, start having subcommittees that would be just like an agenda item for them to report out.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool. Yeah, all right. So we'll start doing that, so that's not necessarily members comments, but then we'll have a place on the agenda that's set for that. And then I, this, I think has come up again, and we've talked about it in other meetings, but we aren't renewing the membership for something related to Alice this year, and you had explained it, Mary. Do you mind explaining that again?
I had not, because I thought that it was jeopardizing us, but Michelle Resenda said that it was not. I had been told by a safety committee member that by not renewing it, that A, we weren't going to be able to get a lot of information, and it was also going to jeopardize us in some form or another. But Michelle said that that, in fact, was not the case. So unless there's more information, and she said that she had also passed this on to the safety committee to let them know that she had a different understanding. So I don't know, maybe, if we can just clarify it again, if, why did you, have you heard from a parent, or did you?
Yeah, it was just, people that just heard that and were then concerned, because they just heard, because it sounds like, oh no, we're not going to be, so it's, it's not necessarily anything more than the wondering.
I want to say vaguely, I remember hearing Michelle say something about, was it about training, where I guess there were people who already trained already here, maybe? And again, I'm not close enough to the situation, but that, that was where we didn't need to pay for additional, because we already had a lot of folks here who.
You do the master trainers, who are then able to train.
Right, right. We can take the training, and we can train our own folks.
Train and train the model.
Right. I want to say it's something like that, so it wasn't like, they're not following the Alice protocols already, it's just that we don't need to be participating in the train, the trainer, something like that, but I'm.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we had people here who could do, train our own staff already, who had gone through the.
Yeah, whatever it was, Michelle assured us that we're, we're okay.
I'm sure I'm misspeaking a little bit, but I just want to know, say, I want to say it was something about that a little bit.
Thank you. That's it. So we've reached the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Oh, we need to make the motion. I'll make a motion that we adjourn our meeting.
Oh, sorry, I thought that you did.
You can second.
And I'll second it.
All right, all on paper?
Yes.
Okay, we're out. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.